Yeah, start with our, it's gonna be over here.
Let's leave this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you for coming. The, uh, meeting is duly convened without notice, since all of our trustees are here to have a quorum. First, I didn't do it in the last meeting, and I don't know if people have met her yet, but, uh, may we introduce the new library director, Mary Malligan. Stand up, say hi. Thank you for coming. Try to stay awake.
It's cold out there.
It is cold, please. Wow. Okay, so that's, uh, well, the way we usually do our meetings is we kinda have staff and trustees go through agenda items, we try to anticipate questions and have a little description of what the, more important items, we'll go for each one, but that's tried generally. Um, so let's start there with anything we wanna talk about from staff, Mr. Swazi, on the, on the actual agenda.
So, Mayor and Board, just, tonight's agenda is pretty light on staff items, it's more legal issues, but last meeting, we need a chance for myself and Joe to open some of the launches that we've been on throughout the summer and bring everyone to the table, including the public, so at the end of the, uh, meeting, um, we can probably, we have time, if we allow us to do that, just to bring it up this week.
Any agenda, Board, need some question, question answered, or just a personal explanation on anything?
Uh, I just have an easy question, hopefully, and probably should know this, but Kevin, when we do these tree bids, will we, just make up a scenario, we're ordering 400 trees, is that because we have plans on where to put them, or it's, or we plan, we're 200 and we need 200, so the point?
Yes, Mayor, question. Uh, each year as part of our planting plan, um, we identify, uh, trees that, uh, need to be removed from inventory. So, a lot of this, uh, planting is because we have taken trees down. We determine whether or not, um, the area that we took the tree down, uh, is, is still a good viable area for a tree, generally, usually is, and that builds the list. Uh, we also get requests on occasion from the public, um, uh, that we respond to after an inspection is done. So, uh, it's a, it's a very specific list with addresses and variety, and as you may recall, uh, we continue to plant, um, a lot of different cultivars, um, based on the, uh, on our reforestation, uh, plan that we continue to follow.
Okay, um, I'm not sure it was lined up correctly, but one of the items, the next item on our agenda is, uh, changing one of our rules, just how we do meetings, so I don't think we'll talk about that. This really should be a set calendar, or?
However the Board chooses to do it, any item can be dealt with individually or as part of a set calendar.
Okay. Okay. Kevin?
We, we probably should do it individually, rather than on a set calendar.
Okay. Sounds good.
About now?
Yeah, I'm in favor of it. I mean, everybody has an opportunity to...
Yeah, I mean, obviously, everybody can comment, I mean, it was, uh, generally just, you know, as we do these meetings, we go through agenda items, we, everyone speaks, we let the public speak, and then at the end, we have sort of general commentary period. I thought, I proposed this, it just seems a little odd to me that people would go back and talk about the same thing we already talked about and voted on. So, it was, it's been in the procedures for who knows how long, or never addressed in the procedures, so I just thought we should clean it up, it helps us keep, uh, meetings running a little better. It's things we would've already voted on, I'm not sure why we would have another general comment period on it, so that's why I thought we should address it specifically, our procedures. So again, it doesn't stop people from talking, when we get to the agenda, people can talk about every topic on the agenda.
Well, I, I think that's where, if people wanna talk, and we have many, many comments about agenda items, now, well, once the agenda items have been discussed, and you did, and for that matter, you voted on it, um, I, I don't see any sense to open it up, to have more discussion on what we've just voted on. I'd rather save the time, or use the time, for other topics that, that trustees and more importantly, the residents of the village wanna talk about. So, that, that's why I'm in favor of, of changing the rules, just, again, not to stop people from talking about it's on the agenda, just that they would talk about it before we voted on the agenda.
Is there anybody?
I disagree. Um, I do not think this is a good idea to make the change. I think, uh, part of the process of what we have in our village is that, uh, at the end of the meeting, anyone has an opportunity to speak on anything. To basically explain it, I will read to you part of what I sent the Board, in my opinion on this. Uh, I said that, although it can be annoying at times when questions are asked later in the meeting on agenda items, this is an open time for our residents to ask questions on any subject, period. Someone may come late to a meeting, sometimes a resident may think of a question later on in the meeting, just like us. Each person who attends our meeting deserves the right to be heard on any topic. This is a dangerous slope, in my opinion, and I think we're going on. I think you can sit there and say, okay, if we do that, would we consider living in common against only five people in total? Should we allow only one person to comment on a particular topic? If someone repeats an opinion, should we cut them off and say, no, thank you, we've already heard that? This is one of the things, I think, that separates Garden City from other communities. We enable every person to be heard on any topic, any topic. Many of these people who come to our meetings work all day like many of us. They leave their families and come late at night, and at times wait for over an hour to speak. I think this is their right, and we must not remove that right from them. That's my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, I tend to agree with Bob in that regard. I don't think we should, uh, stop residents and people from saying whatever they wanted to hear. General comment could be, uh, and if it's related to the agenda items, how long is it gonna take?
Mr. Mayor, um, I agree with trustee Delaney. Uh, I've worked under both systems, as a Board member, and to me, this is a timing issue and an organizational issue. Um, people do get used to when they're coming, I don't think we should wait for a whole meeting and then rehash something that's already been discussed. I think we should have a time period where we talk about agenda items before we all vote, when the public has a chance to affect a decision that we're making, and then leave an open period for new items after we vote. It's a timing, it's an organizational issue, it's an efficiency issue, and it actually, in my experience, has allowed more people to speak.
You may do so now. I would talk about it.
A motion by trustee Delaney to approve the, uh, matter as described in the agenda, uh, as a second, seconded by trustee Foley. All of us in favor? Are you in favor, uh, to be against the item passed through?
Uh, next we, uh, open it up to a motion of evidence that either staff or trustee speaks on some items. The non-agenda? So, just, uh, we're now in the section where this fucking general, uh, has to ask the village.
Mr. Mayor, uh, item seven, uh, and six for that matter, will we have these runs through the village? Do we get the invite? Oh, I'm sorry.
So, they were non-agenda items, we removed?
Yes.
Okay, so I wanted to mention to Mayor and Board publicly and to the public that, uh, we have a project on Pine Street, a new water main, that'll be going in, we've been trying to, uh, get this approved by the, the, most pan help department, but many, many, I think, it's gone through three or four iterations, they gave it on approval a day or two ago, and it's the first, this is the first project that we are now getting, uh, normal, she, because we're actually using an e-voting platform that was developed by New York State called the New York State Contract Reporter. What we're hoping to hear is that it'll increase our pool of contract applicants of theirs, which would help us validate the cost we, uh, we are reviewing on the bid, and then, and hopefully, the competition will drive down costs to the benefit of those and taxpayers. Um, so, a water main project is probably a very specialized project, I'm not quite sure how many people in this particular area there are, but nonetheless, we're hoping that, uh, that our first step here, it'll approve the concept, and, and all future bids will be mailed on the e-voting platform. So, that's one piece of news. Um, I also wanted to mention that, uh, with the help of, uh, the police commissioner and the patrol force, we have identified 23 locations down the village where tree, uh, tree branches are compromising, um, the visibility of traffic lights upon approach. Uh, we asked Parks and Recreation, you know, Recreation Team and Parks Team to look at it. Uh, out of the 23 locations, Parks was able to deal with seven of them, uh, already. I'm going to come to the Board at the 18th meeting, asking for, uh, possible funding for the R610, which is about $23,000. And, um, the other things on the agenda, I want, uh, Mr. D'Isso, or we have a few updates on things that will fall into the service.
Thank you, Mr. Swazi. Um, just, uh, just quickly touching on the e-voting, and just, uh, the system that we are using for e-voting is no cost to the villagers. This is, uh, a service, we found that, uh, we don't incur any cost to use this program, and hopefully, as Mr. Swazi said, expand, uh, the pool of applicants for our bids. I just wanna cover, give a few updates, uh, on a number of items going on in the village now. The paving programs in full swing, we have completed paving, uh, Rockton Road and Hamilton Pace this week, this week, uh, and Kensington will be, uh, completed, uh, hopefully tomorrow, whether permitted. Uh, at that point, we're moving on to roads in the east. Uh, Hamilton Place and 11th Street are next up to be paved. Uh, you might have noticed that we have started replacing the benches on 7th Street. Uh, we, EPW, the street department, along with some assistance from the Parks Department, have completed, uh, putting the benches together, and the street department has been installing them this past week. They should be completed with 7th Street, uh, installation by tomorrow, and then next week, we will replace the benches on the microcar road. Um, the GPS system for the village vehicles that we have invested in as a village, we have started installation on the vehicles. It's a little more labor intensive to install the product than we originally anticipated. Uh, we have about 16, 17% of the vehicles currently have a GPS installed right now, and we're slowly working our way through the rest of the vehicles in the village. Um, we have started concentrating on vehicles that, uh, will be used for plowing and leaf pickup, with those seasons coming up, so those have been a priority, so we are prepared for the upcoming season. Uh, we have a number of other projects going on throughout the village. We have finished converting all the, uh, interior lighting down at the EPW yard facility to energy-efficient LED lighting. Uh, that comp, comprised about 60 light fixtures. Uh, it provides, um, a much safer working environment for the employees, better visibility, uh, and then the, uh, and then obviously improved energy efficiency. The second phase of the project will be converting the exterior lights on the building. Uh, there was about, um, I believe 18 of those. Uh, the garage door replacement project at the yard is about 50 to 60% complete. We've installed, uh, four, replaced four of the eight garage doors, are fully installed and operational, and we've started, uh, on doors five and six. The remaining four doors should hopefully be completed within the next week to 10 days. And lastly, the three generator projects that are going on in the village right now, uh, the senior center generator, uh, all the electric and gas lines have been run, the concrete pad that the generators are sitting on has been poured. We are, uh, now just awaiting delivery of the generator to be installed. Uh, the generator that's being installed at Fire Station Three over in Clinton, uh, we have filed old permission at the Health Department, this generator, it's gonna be a diesel generator, and because of the diesel tank, there was some permitting involved. Um, we are also, uh, having a separate test done the area where we will be pouring the pad to this generator. We discovered in some old documents, at one point, uh, there was an oil tank underground at that site that was used to heat the building. Uh, we believe it was removed a number of years ago, but we wanted to make certain that it was before we poured concrete over that site. Uh, so we're gonna have some testing done to make sure that there is no tank in that area. And the third generator is at the EPW yard. Uh, that generator is ready to be installed and activated, except the switch that was delivered came in damaged. Uh, we rejected delivery of it, uh, we, we rejected the, accepting the delivery of it, and we were waiting for a replacement switch to be delivered. As soon as that's done, we will, um, have that generator installed. Oh, and lastly, we also, um, completed upgrading the electronic control system at the Cedar Valley Sewer Pumping Station. Um, these stations had antiquated, uh, electronic controls running the site. Uh, we were unable to get new parts for it when something broke, so we upgraded the entire system. Uh, it gave us not only better visibility to the operation, uh, it ensured that we had reliable communication if something should go wrong at the site. Um, it's, it's much more, um, modern, where we will get notifications on cell phones. Uh, as we improve and upgrade the SCADA system at the Water Department, this system now has the ability to, uh, connect to that system also. We want to make, um, put that in place for future use, i- if and when we decide to, um, possibly look to sewer stations into the new SCADA system.
Thank you very much, you're very good. I wanted to mention also, um, besides the sewer control upgrade, Mr. D'Isco mentioned, the same, uh, water department, when we're repairing a shaft and screening and pumps at a water, uh, well, sites, the controls are often 30, 40 years old, spare parts are hard to come by, they cannibalize other, uh, old systems from other villages, spare parts, so we're modernizing all the controls, they're efficient, they're, they're easier to communicate with remotely, see what's going on, so, so this is, uh, actually a different way to look at it. Controls are often overlooked, and we're not overlooking it, so.
How are we handling this cyber risk area, and obviously you have like threats?
Yes, absolutely. So, um, every project that requires, that has some type of cyber aspect to it, Total Technology, our third-party, um, IT, um, company is brought into the process. So, um, actually, just recently, a few weeks ago, we had a meeting with, uh, the contractor of one of the SCADA system bid, along with Total Technology and the village, to discuss the, the cyber aspects of it. No, um, and, there was no technical work done in the village without Total, our third-party, uh, provider involved in the decision-making.
So, it's architected into you, is that?
Joe, how about the, just a quick, uh, update on where we stand with the water tower? I know we had some concerns with D E C, the state D E C.
Yes, so.
A little far behind, though.
So.
Thanks, uh, State, Nasser County.
Right, so, um, the, the, the one, uh, uh, object, the, one item that's really holding up the start of this project has actually nothing to do with the tower, actually has to do with the soil underneath the tower. Um, some testing is done, as is required with all these projects for soil remediation, soil testing to determine the quality of the soil, anything that might need to be remediated. When testing was done at a current water tower site, um, it tested positive for lead in the soil. Um, you know, for the past 80 years, this tower's been painted and sandblasted and painted again with lead paint. Some of that lead has soaked into the soil, and the Department of Health and the D E C are requiring us to remediate that soil. Unfortunately, the D E C and the Department of Health can't, can't come to a satisfactory, uh, plan to remove and remediate the soil. Uh, we've submitted a number of plans to them, they've come back a few times with, uh, changes, an additional request to that plan, in fact, one just came back, um, I think, believe on Monday or Tuesday. We sent them a new plan, the D E C on, uh, Long Island, they bounced it up to the State Health Department. State Health Department had additional comments, they wanted some additional changes, so the process comes back through the D E C, back to us again, to rework the plan again. Um, so, you know, we're not fighting them on this, we, I will do whatever it takes to get rid of this, I'll take as much soil out of that site as they want us to, so, um, you know, we're pushing as hard as we can to get it moving.
There's been some overlap with local control, D E C out in Stony Brook, State D E C, and Nasser County Health, so, it's, we think we've come to a place where we're clear on who's in charge of what, but the final plan just hasn't been finalized.
Correct.
Joe, question on that, how much of the soil in the water tower, rather than trying to debate or discuss how much soil, or we're just gonna go ahead?
No, I, I agree. I've, I've spoken to the D E C and said, look, we will do, I'll take out five of these, so you tell me what I wanna take out, I'll take it out. Um, one of the concerns is, and the D E C is mulling over, possibly having to encroach onto private property that orders the site, um, not just our own property. So, that's something that they actually haven't ruled on yet. They might make us, um, remediate soil, uh, north and east of the subdivision property.
Would a face-to-face meeting help?
We've actually had a face-to-face meeting with the, with National County Department of Health. Um, the D E C, we can, I can try to arrange that, I do speak to them, you know, they, I, I think, I call them and they, they take my calls, so it's not a matter of not communicating with that, but.
I think if we sustain, we should have all the parties in the same room.
And I would answer that, and if that doesn't work, I think then we have to ask council to get it, well, it sounds to me like.
Council's in, uh, yeah, okay.
Of course, we've, it sounds to me like we're government overreaching.
We went to our, uh, determining, uh, the.
Early on, and the first, the first pushback to the state, ideally, we were council entailed, um, you know, to state our case for us, and they've been, um, very involved with the process. They're very frustrated by it also.
Like Mr. D'Isco was saying, we, we're saying, listen, we'll do whatever you want, just come to a decision, so they had jurisdictional issues, uh, who's in control of the site, uh, plus the, the lead paint goes back around seven years, and at the time, we had abandoned the painting of the tower and started working on replacements, so it's been sitting there, so that's kinda like hanging out for that, that long, at the time, which does have a little bit of, or just a friction to the process.
Ralph, can you just clarify what you just said there recently? The lead paint goes back seven years, can you just clarify?
What I'm saying is that the lid's been, like Mr. D just said, the, the, that, that old water tower, the 83 old water tower, it's been painted multiple times, and during the painting process, right, you know, the, the environmental loss, in effect, didn't capture and control the site as well as we'd have to today, so, actually, testing was done. At the time, they did it as part of an earlier effort to repaint, and the decision to repaint the tower predates the decision to build it by four or five years.
Yeah, I didn't want anybody to get the idea that you repainted the paint, so that was just the way it sounded.
No, no, it's, it's, it's the paint.
I just wanted to make sure you clarify that.
Right, it's, it's, it's legacy, it's legacy stuff that may have come off from prior things or, for, actually. The new, the, so we're dealing with an old problem that we wanna remediate properly, but the people who are in charge of it just haven't determined what the extent, the extent of it is and how deep, so, we're not fighting the mess, so.
Uh, I just have a couple things to follow up. Uh, are we, have we finished the clearing of rush and trees on the sink walls?
Yes.
Worked out well?
Very well.
We've been able to shift, uh, the north fields, uh, to the west, um, therefore eliminating the, uh, the wear spots that we, uh, worked in with for years. Um, we're out there aerating and seeding today, the area that's closed, um, so that's working out very well as, as well. And the groups are all, sports, sports organizations have all, uh, been cooperating, uh, as well.
Do we have any update on getting, uh, the deal done with Nasser County for Stewart Field?
I would ask, uh, Mr. B to point on that, but we did give the numbers, uh, and Mr. B has twice contacted the attorney in Nasser County for follow-up, um, as recently as this week and also, uh, the prior week, so I think it's in their, both in their courts right now.
Exactly. Um, and, uh, another topic we've all been working on is, uh, ambulance contract, which we approved the concept the last meeting. We're, we're working on the final kinks, we hope to have that done in the next, within the next week, and, uh, running in, end of November, maybe sooner.
Clean ground came into my office this afternoon, I'll circulate that tomorrow.
And just, uh, again, just to publicly say that to finalize the ambulance at our location, we need, uh, some direction from, when, for, about, for, if they need, what kind of space they need, so that we can accommodate them, and.
Yeah, I think we decided we don't need to deal with it at the moment, um, 'cause they may just have it on their own, so if they come to us and ask, we'll figure that out.
Correct.
Mayor? Chief Gallo and trustee Delaney.
Yeah, I wanted to start a conversation, knowing that the budget season is almost upon us, uh, and it's the condition of, uh, Firehouse Two at Stewart Etch A. I was unfortunate enough to have to take a tour with, uh, Joe and Ralph a couple weeks ago. Um, that, that house is in extremely bad condition, roof damage, water leaks, windows leak, bricks need repainting, electric fixtures, et cetera. Um, the list goes on and on. I suggest, any of the trustees who would like to, uh, be shocked, uh, can go over there and take a, a walk through, uh, Firehouse Number Two. Um, Cameron Engineering Record that we did, that gave us, that they gave us in February of this year, uh, puts the cost of, um, estimating cost to repair at about a little over $2 million, and, uh, if we want to make the house available, so we can put our equipment in, because the bay, the new fire equipment does not fit in the bays that we have there, we're probably a little over $3 million. Um, not being an engineer or anything worthwhile, I can't even do things at home properly, um, my thought process is that I think that we should look into, at least look into, the possibility of, um, replacing that building with, and I hear the ads on the radio and TV about the steel buildings and how much less expensive they are, a no-frills building, just that would handle, um, our potential equipment. Uh, we'll probably have two pieces of equipment over there, uh, at a minimum, uh, maybe more, uh, a bunk room, a small kitchen, and if the price was right, uh, maybe a meeting room that, uh, our civic organizations could use. Uh, I'd like to suggest that, uh, trustee, uh, not trustee, uh, the, uh, EPW to, um, take a look at that, along with our, our village administrator, Joe and Ralph, take a look, uh, maybe start some investiga- investigatory work as to what it would cost, um, to put a new building in there. A no-frills, um, building, I know there's, you know, some, and perhaps even, uh, if we could say the facade of that building, I know that building's been around a long time, uh, it just appears to me that, uh, the $2 million number, $2.5 million dollar number to, uh, fix the building, to me, I, I think it could probably get a newer building, uh, less expensive. Uh, all I'm suggesting is that before we make one decision or the other, let's at least look into and see what it would cost, uh, to get a new building, uh, no-frills new building and taking the other building down. Now, let's start thinking about it now, uh, so that, uh, in February, March, when we're in the budget process, we're not all running around thinking, what should we do? Um, because the building is just, in my mind, is, is, I don't think it's repairable at any cost, it makes no sense.
I, I understand that, that you guys visited and there's some leaks and, and, and things we gotta do to maintain, but replacing it with a no-frills steel shed is like a non-starter for me. I, I support having to have, uh, you know, facilities at work and, and, uh, a place to fit the equipment, but tearing down that building to put up, uh, you know, a prefab steel barn or something is just not, you know, it's not anything I would ever support, and I would fight like hell about that, but, you know, if you have something in front of you that says it's $2 million bucks or $3 million bucks, I think there's definitely a priority and a way of going about it, to value engineer it, to get the cost calable to work with what we have, 'cause even a prefab building will be up there in cost. I mean, we're kidding ourselves if we think that it won't be a couple million bucks at least, um, no matter how quick and easy they say it is. Um, so, you know, I don't know, I'm just always that myself, like, there's no context where I would see that building get torn down to be replaced by a steel shed.
Chief Gallo, could you explain, uh, what the guidelines are for new fire apparatus and whether they could fit in that building as it is, or, or, I mean, are, can we buy a smaller vehicle to put in it, or, or that's not? Well, um, basically.
Well, basically, I've been in the department for 27 years. Most of the time, the buildings have not been upgraded. Many years ago, for people who remember, we were going to Louisville Village Hall to St. Paul's. And we were going to get a brand-new firehouse. And that was going to rectify problems back then. That didn't happen, obviously. With today's technology, fire apparatus has gotten wider, higher, and longer. Most importantly, wider and higher. They're diesel vehicles, and now they have a new system, which is called D A F, which is an additional tank and an additional system that works in with the diesel to make it burn cleanly. When you add that, along with safety features like braking systems, more technology, recording devices, the apparatus gets bigger. And when it gets bigger, it has to fit inside. Right now, the bay, we have four engines right now, and only two of them can fit in that firehouse. The ones that do fit in there, in the center bay that can be placed in there, the outer bays, the mirrors have to be folded in. So rendering it a little bit difficult to respond because you have to pull it out. That building, after speaking to Cameron several times, I explained to them that the building is a very nice building. We'd like to keep it. There was an issue that Cameron did not address, which was the bay size, the width of the bays and the height. And the reason they did not address that is because the second floor of that building is a huge, thick concrete slab. Because many years ago, they were going to use it as a repair facility for the police department. So that was the thought process I took. So we had that huge slab up there that they really can't do much with. And that prevents them from widening the bays, which is the major problem here, because the fire apparatus will not fit in there.
See, even that was there to me is like, I don't, I just professionally, I don't agree with that.
This is what Cameron said.
No, no, Cameron's great. Not really, I mean, they are where they are. It's fantastic. But that's, you know, if you want to widen the bay, then widen the bay. Throw a bridge beam in there, you make the bays wider.
That would be the best way to do it.
I don't know, you know, we have the, I guess, consult of one place. You know, I don't think they're intentionally making this look so difficult that we would want to demolish the building. Maybe they're just not considering, you know, all possibilities. Or maybe their focus is narrow, but mine isn't. And if the objective is to keep the building and fit the equipment, you know, it's color forms from then on. I mean, if we have to, we have to, you know, modify the back of the building or, you know, pitch it underground so that height works or, there's a million different ways. You know, there's just a big fairway out there. We can hit it a million different ways. I don't, I don't agree with the fact, or their statement, that they're saying that, you know, you can't widen the bays up. It's a concrete slab. It's not the, you know, it's not a delicate, you know, piece of structure that would fall in or something if you had to be supportive.
You know, I too have some difficulty with completely demolishing that building. The aesthetic value of it is important to the village, I think. I think every time we take down one of the beautiful buildings, we kind of diminish the atmosphere in the village. It has, it's brick with a tile roof. It's very, very beautifully designed. And so I don't want to be unreasonable, and I don't want to say absolutely not, but I really would like to get a look. John, the building that you described sounded very utilitarian.
Well, I didn't mean to.
It came out that way, kind of.
I know it came out that way. It's not, I'm not suggesting a steel shed. I went along with, I just looked at the Cameron Engineering report. I'm not an engineer. And if it can be saved and it can be done at less expensive, you know, fine. Something has to be done. And that's the reason why I just, I...
Yeah, I agree.
One of the things I'd like to say about it is, in terms of the, this had been discussed previously, maybe about, I don't know, a year ago, 10 months ago. And I went over there and took a look at it because I had, oh, my daughter happens to live driving across the street from that building. And, you know, it's very, very good-looking. So the thing of it is that I looked at the land. There's land in the back too. You could preserve the feeling, the character of that building. And you could get rid of the slab. Can't you just demolish, not you, but just demolish it? And maybe on overtime, you could do that. No, seriously, I don't want, you know, I know that you are very serious about your responsibilities and so forth, and I want to appreciate that. But I do think that, I thought that there is land on the side and in the back. Get rid of the slab, leave the beauty of the front and sides if possible, and actually make it bigger. So we could fit enough equipment in there.
Absolutely. So there's one, we have another engineer or somebody look at this.
Yeah, I think it's really the, I think it's the parameters by which you set it now on the assignment. Say, do we want to hang on to that?
Right, but if we can make it, put wire, we could fit equipment in it, and that would...
So John, John, when will we get a look at this?
Yes.
This is a topic I'm very familiar with. A couple of years ago, when I was Fire Commissioner, I worked with Chief Gallo and pushed rather hard to have Cameron Engineering give us a realistic view of what three different firehouses. Look at them, the main firehouse here is in the best shape. The one that needed work also was the one in the east. And the one in the west was considered to be worse. As I have spoken to Chief recently, bottom line is that the requirements of the needs that we have have definitely changed, because now we have gone to a volunteer force totally. And the bottom line is, is that some of the things that we were looking at that we might have to, we require to do, both in the main firehouse and also in the west, those requirements would not be today. Which I'm correct, am I correct, Chief?
Yes.
Okay, all right. With that in mind, the amount of money that we would then need to spend, which was originally projected, is far less than it would be originally for. So when you kind of look at what are we going to do with the firehouse in the west, you have to realize that, again, the original money, as we were talking about potentially, we might need in the other firehouses, again, is much lower than what we were looking at before. And again, that's a different discussion. The firehouse that's in the west is a beautiful building, and I kind of fall in between. On one hand, I understand where Trustee Blain is going with this, but to replace that with any type of a steel shed or that type of a look, which is not what he meant.
I did say, I'm just, I'll correct. You did say utilitarian, several times. So, you know, I don't know what that means to everybody here. I don't like, I described my house as such with my wife, like she gave me one of the, the...
I was speaking, I was speaking. But the thing that, the problem that you have with the firehouse is, and this is the best way, I think, I would say, Chief, you correct me if I'm wrong, is that firehouse was built for a different time, okay? When that firehouse was built, as is stated, is that even though it's a beautiful look at, that firehouse is falling apart, whether you realize it or not. The holes are so bad in some of the walls that animals are coming through. The fire escape that you had on the side of the building is disconnecting from the building because the building can't hold bolts anymore in order to hold the fire there. When you look at the inside of the building, you have the slab that's there on the second floor, which again, they were originally thinking about putting cars in there to repair. And if you look at the building, you also have a long tube that goes up in the back. That's where they used to take the old hoses that were done with cloth and used to hang them there, so that this way the hoses would dry. So the reality of it is, is that this building was built for a different time. So what I think we need to do when we look at this building is we obviously, when we replace it, we have to replace it with the same look. We have to replace it with the same character, the fits within our community, where we do that with so many things within our community. But again, the bottom line is, is that, again, I'm not an architect or engineer. That's your area, Luke. But what I do know is that this building is in far worse shape than just simply say, oh, it's just a slab, or we need to move something up or whatever. So to me, I think that if in the event we were, in my opinion, from everything that I've seen and everything I've read, I think probably the best thing to do would be to take the building, tear it down, put up a brand-new building, save the brick, save the facade, put up something that will look very similar to that. But you don't need the stacks in order to dry hoses anymore. You don't need the slab in order to bring cars in there out of that is there. And again, living in the west, the W P O A used to hold our meetings there for many years. I used to look inside the building, and I was amazed at how it looked. And when I was Fire Commissioner, just like Trustee Blain, I went in there, I went through the building, and the condition I found was astonishing. So again, wherever we get to, but either way, whatever we put there, I think has to be something which goes within the community. So that's just what I think.
Can I just dovetail on one thing that we're saying? We seem to be like blaming the building for being not well-maintained. A lot of things, like, building can't even hold on to its own fire escape. Like, that, that's not the building's fault. That's quite frankly how we're feeling. The maintenance is not there. But that, I wouldn't throw the baby out with the bathwater and say, oh, we've got to start again. I think we should, if you want, we could look at that and get a price for it. But I would, I would rather see also Cameron Engineering take a look at what it's like to save the building. I guarantee it's getting nowhere cost effectively to start again.
Well, but, but again, if you look at what Cameron Engineering was, was at, one, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong. The whole report of Cameron Engineering was to determine what was needed to be done and what needed to be repaired in the building. Not whatever, and that's what I'm saying to you, is that before you get to building three, if we can, with the chief's help, with Cameron, reevaluate what needs we have in the other two firehouses, you then have an idea of what your total obligation is.
But as far as this building, I mean, what would it cost to renovate it, to make it usable again? And what would it cost for a new building?
That's, I think, the exercise. I just think that's it.
That's an exercise, and I thought, I spoke to, but I obviously was not clear on it. I mean, you were pretty clear.
You want something resembling a small prison to...
I want to add a little color to the conversation, the word steel shed. When we first commissioned Cameron Engineering, I told them that there was, there were opinions out there to totally demolish the building, but I wanted them to look at it in a sense of preserving the building. So they were not given instructions other than to tell us what the building needs to put it back into normal health. How can we make it so it's not leaking, it meets code, that sort of stuff? That was the $2.5 to $3 million price tag, we continue to see stuff. And these were guesses, and it weren't based on data documents. When they started expanding it to make it functional, what, what was the bulk of what they're saying is that in architecture, there's a term that says form follows function. The form this building was built to was the function of yesterday. To make it function for tomorrow, the form has to change. So how do we do that? Do we gut it? Do we...
Those are options I think we'd like to be studied.
So, but the options to just add on to, to make it function for new equipment, and they make the front restored back to its original health, was a $5 to $6 million option. So these are big numbers, depending where to go. But in between that two and six, there's a lot of options. Buckle buildings, redo facades, restore the old, raise the, raise the front, gut it completely, new beams. So we're not at that point. And all I know, they were asked to look at preservation as well as...
No, no, I can tell from the, from the original report, it doesn't say that they should be knocked over. And quite frankly, most of the stuff inside is so out of code. It's not even, take the slate roof, take the mason ring, put that in a box for a minute. I mean, everything that's been done since was kind of, you know, how did they ever get away with that? There's electrical conduit running underneath the baseboards. There's crazy stuff going on in there. So it might very well be that they could come back and say, you know what? You should just gut the place and start over. Just keep the shell. Maybe you have to bust out the back to fit the really big truck everybody wants. But I think that's a lot more keeping with the fabric of the community than to put up a new building. I just, you know, I'll never get to a place where I know a great job is put up.
Are you settled on what you need? You need two bays?
Just to clarify, just, I want to address what Trustee Manu said. I went there with Cameron Engineering to watch two separate occasions, myself, Ozzy, when he was here. And one of the things I did both times, when I stood in front of the building and I opened the bay doors, and I explained to them, regardless of what we do inside, fix this building, the essential thing is that these bays need to be widened and possibly raised. They told me, no problem, chief. That's not supposed to reflect here. That's my own concern. I just want to clarify, because when this was, when this was produced, they basically... And what I just want to...
It sounds like what we need to do is tell them, okay, we kept this immediate shell, right? You need what? You need two bays?
Give them their program.
We need three bays. We need three bays, one extended bay. Right now, there's two pieces of apparatus there, and there's an engine that's going in there. There's three pieces of apparatus that will be in there eventually. And that's what used to be in there.
So we'll have three vehicles there.
Correct.
How many here?
How many here? The same amount we have right now, wouldn't change. It's just the one engine that was not there, was at the building yard. That's why there's a difference there.
And that number we have here is...
The number we have here right now is we have one engine, two ladders, and a heavy rescue.
And what would be two?
Two would be two engines and either antique engine, or it would be the, depending on where we move things, the trailer we use for fire prevention aid slash public education. Right now, that's a video right there. I'm sorry?
What's on Clinton?
One engine over there, and either if we move the antique truck to Clinton, then we could put the fire prevention trailer in that spot on the station tow. Our stunt is setting in the yard.
Nine firefighting vehicles?
Well, nine all firefighting vehicles. Two of them, one is the antique fire truck.
You get that one.
And the other one is the fire prevention trailer, which has been at the yard because we don't have a smartphone.
Four in the village hall, three in two.
Correct.
And two in...
Correct.
Three.
Three has a big wide door, so there's a lot of...
And that? What about three? Not.
Plus the interior.
Does that include the... Yeah, it includes.
So you need the three bays?
No, that's it right now.
Well, you know, I think we should just, I think we should sit down and you should put some thought on writing a program for each house. And saying, well, you know, if you're going to renovate your house and go to an architect and say, how many bedrooms do you need, you know, how big you want the kitchen? You got to kind of do the same thing for each house. If we're going to start from scratch and suggest to gut it, which I, frankly, I would. There's so many maintenance things. Why go through that pain? You know, you might as well just gut the thing and start from scratch and actually build it to code inside. And then get the amenities and the function you want out of it. And then, you know, we'll see what sort of modifications you need to make to build it. But you have to sit down and write for each of the houses.
Gut the building, keep the whole shell, fix the whole shell.
Provide, I did provide them sizes. They got asked me the sizes of apparatus back before they did this, to do this, and I provided them the sizes of apparatus.
Build out the whole building.
I'll make, we need a bunk room for whatever, free guys or key stepping guys, whatever.
Build that out, sit down with them, and say, okay, if we keep this building as a shell and redo the whole inside, here's the things we need, here's how much it costs.
You have to increase the bays as well, like, to the...
Whatever it is, whatever it is.
That's the drawing this into, and just one thing, Mr. Janelle, of us being Cameron Donovan, who's very sensitive to that, who had commissions before at that point development. I asked Mr. G to go out and put some, and with, on here, just to see in the context of real math, inside these doors, these things. Thank you, Mr. J. This is not here inside the project document.
I know we're talking about cutting the interior, but have we assessed the exterior to make sure that the exterior, the condition of the exterior is...
That's, that's in the report.
That's it.
It's your garden variety old buildings, you know, the, it's this roof pointing, flashing, nothing terminal.
Okay, we can move on. If you wanted to actually, to head about this topic, October 3rd, 4th, budget's coming up. Budget season will be starting, and sure, it never ends, but... Budget season will be starting, and sure, it never ends, but.
So, you know, we're still wrapping up actually the fiscal year ending seventeen eighteen. Um, we just reported to New York State our financials, and we're completing the analysis to complete our financial audit report by November. So, but yes, just like they are mentioned, we would be kicking off the budget, the nineteen twenty budget process, um, sometime in mid-November. We typically, um, kick it off around then. We talk about general guidelines with all the department heads. Um, and then, when the November actuals are available, we provide information to each department head showing, you know, for the first six months of the current fiscal year, here's where you are, you know, provide us a forecast for the remains this month of the year. You know, we provide templates, detailed information showing, here's your last fiscal year's actuals, your current year's budget, your current year's forecast, um, so they can have a starting point for their budgets. We also provide very detailed staffing information by department for all their staff. Um, we also show maybe what the expected contractual raises are for the next fiscal year. The department heads actually have to manage and figure out, you know, what, if any promotions, what if any open positions they have, what if any retirements they have as well, to adjust their budgets. Um, you know, we have, we, we begin in November, but there's numerous meetings that we have individually with each department head, various iterations of the budget. Our main goal, of course, and it's always been for the last three years, is to, um, you know, present to the trustees a tax-free fine budget. Um, so obviously, once we consolidate each department's budgets, proposed budgets, we have to, you know, see what, what, what are the, um, total numbers coming in at, and then go back and forth to, you know, ensure that we do know the tax-free fine budget. The general guideline we give the department heads at the beginning of the process is to, you know, as much as possible, come in flat. Um, knowing that the, you know, the tax cap, you know, number is, you know, to, the, the, at the highest, two percent, but it could be much lower than that, as we've seen in the last couple of years. Um, and we do have contractual raises, we have inflationary increases, we have, um, health and dental, you know, benefits that, you know, or health benefits that increased, uh, they're provided, the increases are provided by New York State. We have pension costs that increase. Um, so we have costs that, that go up that are beyond our control. So as much as possible, discretionary costs, we try to manage those down. Um, we also go through each department's capital project requests. And of course, there's always more projects than, you know, possible budget dollars available. Um, so, right, Mr. Defense, it's going, he has ninety-nine percent of all the capital projects. Um, so, you know, we do go over, you know, prioritization, what are projects we can, you know, defer to, you know, modify your capital plan, so we, we, we have numerous discussions regarding capital projects. Um, and then we also provide, you know, various analysis on, you know, you know, what are potential debt services, what is, uh, how much projects can we pay through taxes versus bonding, um, and look at future costs as well. Um, so it is very intensive, uh, five to six month process that we go through. Um, but, you know, so there's a lot of work that goes on in, in, in the beginning. Um, and then we pick off the budgets from early March and present a budget to the trustees. And of course, we have budget work session, and it's that, um, a lot of information is provided, a lot of feedback is provided by the trustees, and then changes are made accordingly. So, this will be the top of the budget, and people.
Thank you. I would ask that next meeting is the eighteenth, or the eighteenth?
Yes.
If anyone has sort of a high-level concern or topic they want addressed as part of the budget process, show up on the eighteenth with your list of whether it's one thing or three things, so we can start the process where we want to be as opposed to try to modify the budget at the end. Just, just be able to try to do that, that way they get started on the right track from where we want to be. Uh, any other generally people like to do?
I just had a quick question. Kevin, can you give us an update on field two? When is that going to be taken offline and, and worked?
Field two, the, uh, basically the specifications have been just about completed. Um, they'll be going, we're going to be doing that project under the NASA Kennedy requirements contract, um, as we have the other fields that we've built. So, um, basically what happens is Cameron has completed their, um, concept plan, we got a lot of feedback, um, tweaked it, and given them, uh, everything. So they're just packaging that. What happens, the way that works is the holder of the requirements contract will get a, basically a contracted package to look at, and they have to fill in line by line their expenses. Um, so that is, we're only about a week away from that. And then, uh, when it comes to the board, um, I'm not sure for the view for the next meeting, it could be, um, to approve it.
So what do you expect the shovel going to the ground?
Oh, we'll get, we'll get in the ground this later on, and for, uh, that's the intention. And the field will be ready for play, uh, for all the damage.
Anyone else? Okay, um, citizens' comments on agenda, anything on the agenda? Anyone would like to talk about or further explain? Yes, ma'am?
Captain, I'm on the floor now, and I have a little discussion about the rules and procedures. I want to be technically correct at this point. So the presentation of the law of the world will be a non-agenda item question to ask? Safe to discuss?
No, who, who asked?
Well, but, but Roman numeral eight says, "Citizens' comments on non-agenda" Roman numeral nine is presentation, airboat.
Yeah, that's a separate presentation. When they get up and talk.
That's what I'm asking, so that would be.
Allowed questions.
That's a nine. Just wanted to make sure. You want to get my question?
Yeah, thank you.
I feel similar, honey, from the road. I'd like to thank trustee Bolabro and trustee Hyer for not supporting that agenda item, Roman numeral four. Who was the third trustee who voted against it?
Trustee Truvay.
Thank you, trustee Truvay. Um, I think since this item impacts residents, it shouldn't have been voted on until we had a chance to comment. But trustee Bolabro, trustee Hyer, I didn't hear your comments, trustee Truvay, but thank you for your comments with the favor, excellent.
Okay, seeing that, we'll move to the next item, is approval of minutes, September twentieth meeting, two thousand eighteen, made motion. Trustee Green makes that motion, seconded by trustee Delaney, all those in favor of approving minutes of September twentieth, two thousand eighteen. Unanimously approved. All agenda, I mean, the safe name, the separate item?
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, there's an application for the board for final site plan approval for a twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-five cent foot addition, uh, to buildings at Delphi. Prior to passive approach on that, I would suggest the board may desire to classify the proposed action as an unlisted action for purposes of SECR. Uh, and based upon examination of the EAF and materials provided by the ABL and the criteria that were from the six, uh, CRR, six seventeen, which is the section regarding State of Environment, Law, and New Act, uh, might make the determination, uh, negative determination of environmental, sorry, neg dac, uh, is appropriate, and further words, let's see. So, just to clarify, there would be an initial vote to make the determination of a negative declaration, and then there would be the subsequent vote with regards to the actual site plan.
I just had a question, too. Ed will be, been through building part now, is there anyone in Delphi who wants to talk about this? Basically, a rehab of an existing building, right?
Yes, it is. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, Bob Schipley, Eighteen Wall Street, resident of the East, also assistant vice president for facilities. Uh, the project has been through ADRB and planning commission hearings, and approved by both. And at this point, we're just awaiting site plan approval by the fourth to go to the next step of submitting drawings for permits.
And it's supposed to rehab existing?
Yes, it's the University Center, we follow the University Center. Uh, we're maintaining existing building and putting additions to, uh, pre-site it.
I will say they presented at CPOA as well.
Yes, and I believe we are making arrangements to, uh, do a presentation to Western POA in March or April, from the last I heard from my president's office.
What section do you want?
East.
Where's Delphi?
What, uh, it's, it's, yes. My whole big five-minute commute every day to work.
I also met with Bob, we went through the implications of the fire department. And changes with the fire department, and there would be substantial upgrades to the fire service inside the building, sprinkler, and it would not impede any fire service while the construction was going on. We spoke about that, so it would definitely be, uh, an upgrade in the fire service for this building to, uh, receive these changes.
Chief, will he, will he not have popcorn and hairdryers over there?
As soon as we don't have polish tubes.
The residents' halls.
Necessary evil. In fact, they were, they were just there this afternoon in one of our reservoirs, or probably a hairdryer or something to that effect.
You guys are killing us over there. I say that, I say that with a smile on my face, but I just want you to know that, uh, the, the fire department spends a lot of time over there, and I am very concerned about the fact that you guys aren't taxpayers.
Thank you.
A thing, topic of further discussion, discussion? Yep. Um, okay, so I guess we decided we would act separately for the negative declaration? I'll read it and.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that a motion be made to declare the project as a unlisted action with a negative declaration for purposes of SECR.
I'll vote. Motion made by trustee Delaney, seconded. Trustee Truvay seconds, all those in favor, unanimously approved. And now the formal, the final site plan approval?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, is there a motion to approve the final site plan pursuant to, uh, chapter two hundred, section eighty-two point seven?
Are they painting this building orange at all?
And you have to bring up the orange building.
Not this one.
No, this one is brick and will remain brick, with the exception of the glass additions that will go on.
And that's really in the back.
Have you considered a look into a metal container? I don't know. Because there's a trustee here who may have.
I just came to say, uh, this firehouse gave out. We're always looking for more square footage, so.
They're there anyway.
Good motion for the final site plan approval, trustee, the vehicle makes that motion. Trustee totally seconds that motion, all in favor of the item, unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Happy building.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees.
When do you think you'd actually?
Uh, well, I have a little detail of building permits that I have to speak to Mr. Giavani Bado here, which will be submitted shortly. Uh, we are hoping to start construction before the end of year, uh, with the goal of being complete by, um, the end of next year, so, no, October, November.
Did you talk on one of your projects?
Yes.
You think, you guys have been working with the chamber also, some of your.
Working with the chamber, yes.
Any other actions?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Next, we have our consent calendar, and a motion, does anyone have any, maybe we have to move to consent calendar? We want to approve the items like.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I mean, for some of these runs and events that we have, specifically seven, do we get, there's a cost that we incur, do we get reimbursed for any of that?
Big, uh, any, for any police-related fees on runs and zip lines? No, Delphi, Delphi. This is seven, there's two of them, is the teachers and then the Delphi.
Yes, they have to, they have to, uh, give us a check of twenty-five hundred dollars before the event, and then we calculate the, if there is any overtime, DPW Recreation Police, and they pay a maximum of five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Any motion to approve the consent calendar again? All those in favor? Unanimously approved. Thank you. Now we move to our open, uh, item. Uh, any comments, uh, from citizens on non-agenda items? Anything that people would like to discuss or question about?
This is, um, about the presentation by the law of the world, so should I ask my question now or wait until?
Let's let him go and then we'll, easy question. Floor is yours, Kevin.
Mr. Mayor, what they have said, actually, I just take a moment to acknowledge, uh, Mr. Morrow from my office, I am not yielding my seat on a permanent basis, but, uh, Mr. Morrow does work with staff on a daily basis. And from time to time, under those rare circumstances when I am not able to make a meeting, they wind up taking my chair, so I wanted the public and the board to be aware of his presence. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Someday, we will actually have a projector in this room, probably be set up. Thank you. If we could get this started. Thank you. Would you guys introduce yourselves?
Okay, I'm Andy Kraus. I am an outreach ambassador for Michael Koye. Here we go. And we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to speak both to the village trustees, staff, and certainly members of the community who are interested in the project, learning more and asking their questions. So we'll have plenty of time for questions as we go through this. So my name is Andy Kraus. I am an outreach ambassador for the project. This is Travis Brennan. Travis is the outreach director for the project. Bob Hammel is a senior construction manager, and Leslie Mesnick is with project management. So the slide you're looking at actually is kind of a preview of what Maryland Station may look like or will expect to look like in the future. We feel really positive about the kind of traditional aesthetic, the bricks and stone. This is the southwest corner of the Nassau Road Bridge right there, so you get a first look at that, and there'll be additional designs that you'll be looking at down the road. Good, thanks. There we go. Okay, one member of our team is celebrating his 30th birthday for the sixth time, so he's not here tonight. Just to make very clear who we are, we are actually not the Long Island Railroad. We are a construction consortium that was selected by the MTA to design and build this project. So our name actually is Third Track Constructors, so if you hear 3TC, Third Track Constructors, that's who we are. And as you can see, some of the very well-known and prestigious construction companies that make up this consortium. So we have a PowerPoint presentation tonight. It's not long, I think there's a dozen or 15 slides at the very most. We're going to go through it quickly. We're going to talk at the village's request, we're kind of presenting an update, what's been going on with the project for the last six or so months in the pre-construction stage. We'll talk about some of the major construction that will be taking place in the community in the months to come and give you kind of a timeline. We'll also discuss some of the main topical areas that we have discussed with members of the community and with the village. And we have had a lot of discussions over the course of the last six months with the POAs, with the staff, with the police commissioner, the fire chief, the school district, and so on and so forth, and these meetings continue, the engagement continues. Next week, we're going to be in front of the central POA, and we're also going back to meet the new school superintendent next week, so... So this is just a quick overview of the project components, the entire project. As you might know, it extends from Floral Park to Hicksville, and it's 9.8 miles long and very narrow, so it's a very unusual construction site, as you can imagine. So in the Village of Garden City, we obviously have the Maryland Avenue Station, New Hyde Park Station, which is obviously just over the border, but one that's utilized by this community, and construction will take place there. We have two bridge reconstructions, Tanner's Pond and Denon Avenue, we have Nassau Boulevard Bridge, and then we have the New Hyde Park Grade Crossing, which will no longer be a grade crossing, which in fact will be an underpass. So no more train whistles, no more gates, no more waiting there forever for that, for the gates to go up and traffic to go through. So just a recap of some of the pre-construction activities that have been taking place to date in the Village of Garden City. You may or may not notice any of these. Frankly, a lot of it's just kind of under the radar, but a very important component of this are traffic studies and work zone management. So the important part of that is to make sure that as construction is taking place, safety is maintained and that we avoid as much traffic congestion as possible. So there have been any number of engineers and others doing traffic counts, analyzing intersections. We've had discussions with, again, the school district, with the police department, et cetera, and as we go forward, that traffic, that work zone management plan will be more formalized and made available to members of the community. We've also talked with trustee Makronos about coming for the traffic commission to have more of a public-facing discussion about that. The second item, structure and road inspections. A survey of all the roads in the village has been done to identify what the pre-construction condition is of that. Noise measurement and monitoring, again, creating kind of a baseline, because measuring noise, monitoring it, and controlling it obviously is an important part of this project. There's been surveying both above ground and underground, road control and the right-of-way. Frankly, when you disturb the right-of-way, you disturb the habitat of roads and others. So controlling that at this point in the pre-construction is important. Access gate installation, some of you are very aware that you have an access gate at the end of your block. We'll talk more about access to the right-of-way and why that's important. Last item is community outreach meetings, et cetera, and I touched on a couple of those, and that process continues. So I'm going to turn it to Travis to give us a little bit more in terms of what's going to be happening and when.
So thank you, everyone, thank you. Mayor, trustees, and obviously members of the general public that took their time out tonight to come out here and listen. The reason we're here is to discuss some potential staging areas for construction vehicles and the work that we're going to be doing. We have a more robust presentation, which as Andy said, we've already presented to the Western POA, the Estates POA. We have a CPOA meeting next week. So we're going to run through just a brief, brief overview of the project. This is a design-build project, meaning we are designing it and building it in concert at the same time. You know, the benefits of that is to speed up the overall timeframe of the construction. Mayor has always pointed out that this is going to be a disruptive activity in your local area, and we want to do it as fast as possible, get it done as efficiently as possible, and get out of this area as quickly as we can. If you look at some of the upcoming activities, you see that with the design-build, we're a little bit far away when it comes to Garden City, and I think it's important to note that we will be continuing to have, and our outreach effort will continue, up until and through these activities. So while we're here now, and while we've gotten out in front of the POAs, and I've met with a number of the trustees, Mayor has over a handful of times met with us, both here and at our office, and we are going to continue that transparent, public-facing, and most important, accountable aspect of letting everyone know what's coming, when it's coming, and making sure that the public is aware of the activities that are happening in and around your area. As you can see, Maryland Station is scheduled to start in April. What I will preface is that being a design-build and us trying to accomplish this mega infrastructure and upgrade of an antiquated rail system is going to happen in four years. So what that means is, is if one of these project elements slip, or if there's another project element that needs to move or accelerate itself up into the schedule, that doesn't mean that we delay the overall timeline of when we're going to complete the project. If Maryland Station ends up moving to, let's say, August of 2019, another project element will take its place. And again, I think that's important to understand, so that while we're trying to do our best to project out and let everyone know exactly when things are going to happen, we will certainly be informed before we start any activity, but there is an element of the unknown with a design-build versus a design-bid-build. And I think that's important, and if anybody would like more detailed explanation on that in the interest of time, I'll hold off, but please ask them, I'd be happy to explain. So obviously, those are the upcoming activities. Can we move to...
Yeah, I need to talk to you one second.
Of course.
But what you said with Mr. Quinney is Covert Avenue, can you just look at the residents and all of them?
Sure, absolutely. So we try to keep it Garden City specific, but we certainly know Covert Avenue is a very main thoroughfare that everyone probably utilizes daily. We're anticipating starting and closing Covert in February of 2019, and as the contractors, we have an obligation to return that road from full closure to complete, to the end, to the complete construction with some items still left, maybe some punchless items or things that need to be taken care of, but reopening that road to full traffic within six months. So we anticipate closing it from February to, I believe it's August, and what we've been obligated to do by the railroad is not close two major roads at the same time. So when Covert is reopened, that's when we're going to then start our work on New Hyde Park Road. Unlike Covert, New Hyde Park Road is not going to be a full closure. We're always going to maintain vehicular traffic in both directions, and so I think that's a key point that everyone needs to understand, that Covert will be different than it ever has been since the inception of the railroad. And New Hyde Park Road, once Covert is reopened, will then be upgraded as well, but you will have free-flowing traffic on Covert without the gates. And that's a very important point that I think we should all look forward to, if anybody's ever sat at those gates. It's a safety hazard, it's a time constraint, and it's really a, it's an unfortunate side effect of having such a good rail system throughout Long Island. So what I require here is to gather feedback, and I think when you look at the elements of what we've already spoken to and having met with Fire Chief, having met with Commissioner Johnson, having met with your mayor, having met with a bunch of trustees, trustee Makronos, you know, we have, we've gone out of our way to try and develop a plan when it comes to traffic, when it comes to construction, when it comes to activities. And so we're looking to gather feedback tonight from anybody that feels that they would like to have a say in what we're doing. We are completely transparent, we want to make sure that everyone understands that. There is nothing set in stone, and we're here to try and, we're here to try to move this process forward, but also make sure that we're doing it in a respectful manner. You know, when you look at these actual items, the mayor has gone down to the streets and has literally taken the minutia of this project and said, "I don't believe X street is going to work. I think you need to move this to Y. I think you need to move this to another area." You know, and I think that's important for everyone to understand. We have a traffic management control plan that is a living, breathing plan. We have engineers, professional licensed engineers, going through all different elements and standing on your street corners, trying to divert and make sure that traffic impacts are as least impactful as possible. You know, it's a living plan, as I said, so if they find that something's not working, we can fix it. And if the village sees that there's an issue with some of the elements we put in place, we can amend those issues. So, I'll stay here. So along those lines, I think we should, again, having gone over some of the elements of that list, you're going to see, obviously, we've coordinated with the village on grade crossing, on the station aesthetics, a very important part of what Andy had said, trying to capture a traditional feel, trying to make sure Garden City remains Garden City. When people get off the train, it has a very unique and special look to it, and we're trying to do that across the corridor. We're trying to give everybody a little piece of their local village and making sure that we don't lose track of what makes the area the area. Important keys to note is that the station's going to remain open, that, you know, we are trying to do this project in such a, in such a revolutionary fashion, I would say, because it's happening so quickly. And to be able to leave these facilities open for the public to use, I think is a testament to Bob and his team and to 3TC, who bid this process and bid this project aggressively and have come up with a real clear path to get us to December of 2022. One key element that I know is important for the community is truck traffic, and the mayor addressed that at our last Estates POA meeting. We are not building mega bridges. We are fixing the bridges to make them more modern, to stop bridge strikes, to stop snarl traffic, and to make sure that people can free, to drive freely on your roads. Raising a foot and a quarter and two and a half feet at Nassau. So I think it's, I know a lot of comments I've heard is that trucks are just going to fly through your area. You know, we are not building high, high hybrids. We are doing what we need to in order to meet the minimum requirement of the interstate. When you look at another hot button issue in Garden City are the retaining sound walls. You know, anybody that lives near the tracks understands that noise from the train is disruptive. We are building a sound wall that's going to help mitigate the noise that comes from the rails. Studies have shown that the rail noise comes mostly from the tracks, from the wheels, and the sound wall will raise above the tracks and those wheels that are making noise currently. Obviously, you also are dealing with the elimination of grade crossings, so you're no longer going to have the train whistles and the train horns as they go by. Another key element, which I think is very important, is that we have, and we're being held to very strict standards by the railroad and by the MTA regarding noise and regarding a lot of other elements of construction. Noise testing and monitoring is not only going to stay within the, we're going to attempt to stay within the agreed-upon limits, but we are, have very strict requirements that we can't exceed some of those noise variance levels. If we do, we have to stop, we have to reevaluate, and we have to come up with a solution that is not only... is not only amicable to the surrounding area, but also fits within those guidelines. Monitoring is going to go on throughout the entire project, and we're going to make sure that we do right by the community that we're in. Another very important topic to Garden City are the trees and keeping the green spaces green and trying to minimize the impacts of us building this project, as Andy said, in such a small and narrow area. We are obligated by contract that any trees we take that are not on the Long Island right-of-way, we are replacing one for one. If it is not, if we can't find a tree, if it's too big, or we need to come up with another solution, we might, we might trade, we might replace it two for one. But the point is, is that we are not eliminating any trees from Garden City. If we have to take it, because we know that the tree is going to be affected by the work we're doing, we're going to replace it. And again, I know Garden City, I grew up here, I grew up on the North Shore, Garden City loves their trees, rightfully so, and we're committed to making sure that you guys don't lose any that are yours. Onto the most important topic, and thank you all for listening to me. If you'd like to come to one of our POA presentations, it's a little more in-depth, and we have a lot more information regarding what we're doing. It's the construction staging and access. I'd like to kick it over to our lead construction supervisor, Bob, Bob Hamel, who is responsible for organizing and making sure that the field teams are operating, that our construction project is flowing. And he's going to go into sort of the why. We'd like to talk about utilizing some of your areas for staging, and then we're going to talk about how that's going to help and/or minimize the impacts that we have throughout the village. Thank you, Chris.
Good evening, everybody. We're all here together talking about access points and getting in and out of the village. It's a job that's very complicated, but it's easy. The complicating factor is trying to get all the materials distributed into the Long Island Railroad in order to build these walls. We have looked at all different access points, talked to the village, met with them, and we're coming up with a plan currently. We have some access gates that are already installed. The access gates that are pretty much installed are the ones that we will be using. We're analyzing that. We put a few gates in, and we had some concerns already for the community. Travis and Andy and all of the villagers are already addressing them. We're not going to say that we're not going to use them, but they're there for two reasons, for construction and also if there's an emergency for my workers. So we put them in, God forbid somebody gets hurt, we have to get somebody out, we call 911 and get the guys out if something does happen, as an emergency precaution. So sometimes you'll see a gate in there that's strictly used for that reason, for construction. Doing this for so many years, it's, things do happen. But between the access gates right now that we have in are basically from Denton all the way down to, I think it's Kensington, we have right now six of them. We're starting to do a little bit of tree clearing within the right-of-way, all over the place. We're staying within the defense lines, which is Long Island's property. A lot of that has to do with eliminating the overhead wires through the, like, trees through wires currently. Travis said anything outside the right-of-way, we have a certified arborist that's for the construction team, we have a certified arborist for the design team. So before we touch anything on the outside, I just want to address that a little bit, we go to our arborist, and then we go to the village if it's on the village property, and then if it's on your property, before we do anything, we go to the resident. So just, we don't go in there, we're not that cowboy. We go in there, we have great communication, clearly with the teams, so you'll get a phone call from Travis or Andy, will want to meet you, talk to you. And then there is a, if we do have to remove it, a lot of it has to do, so you understand where the walls go up, there's an excavation limit, so it's, we look at the tree itself, the health of the tree, and also the root wall, so that when we walk away, that tree's going to be healthy. That's the big, that's the big key if you have a lot of concerns. If we didn't take the tree down, we'll agree with what you guys want to do with that species, the caliper. As Travis said, it's a diameter, and we multiply it up into smaller trees around your property. So we're very compassionate about that. We all have, you know, houses and all that, we don't want to lose our trees, but we do have a plan that addresses that, and it's a very good plan, I think. Within the streets in the villages, we do need to utilize the gates, we do need to utilize the roads. We're not bringing big tractor-trailers in here, we can't, we realize that. We have a depot yard in Hicksville, one up in Carnation, a small one, but the big yard will be down in Hicksville, where the tractor-trailers come in, we break them down into smaller vehicles. So when they're coming into the village, they're small trucks, all right? It's a tri-axle, all right? It's not concrete trucks that sit there and spin and make all kinds of noise. These trucks are tri-axle or tandem boom trucks that will come in, get offloaded. They won't idle, they're not going to sit there. We have environmental compliance that the guys will shut them off. We have a GPS system in every single vehicle we own. I can turn on that vehicle, if I get a phone call from Travis and says, "Hey, I've got a truck on Kensington Boulevard that's been sitting there idling," or somebody, one of you guys have a problem, or a seesaw, one of my trucks speed through, I can real-time look at that truck and see what that truck did within a second. That's a pretty unique thing we're putting in our vehicles. Why? If we get complaints from the community and we have a concern with our guys, all right? We know who's driving the truck and what's going on with that truck at a specific time for safety. We know you all have kids, I have kids, I got grandkids, believe it or not, and we're very concerned about that. We know we have to use your streets, we have very professional people. I need you guys, if you have any problems, to approach my guys. My guys will talk to you, all right? They're, they're very professional. You've got a concern, get ahold of Travis on the 3TC hotline, okay? We will address the situation immediately, and if we notice a situation, we will be there. I've gone out to three or four houses myself, Travis. But we do need to use the roads. One way that would really help us out would be to utilize the cow and utilize Tullamore, just as staging areas if it's possible. We're trying to work with the village now and that. That helps us out to bring material in and leave it in those yards, all right? And then we could break it down, because those yards will lead right into the right-of-way. And that was one of the keys, if we can utilize that, we can keep our equipment there. It's just, there's a big protocol of how we have to build these walls and these retaining walls. These pieces are pretty big size. We're trying to make them as big as we can to make the construction sequence as short as we can, and that's the big key. So we're looking at that. It's, it's not a very long process, so the quicker we can get access, the quicker out of your hair. We have street sweepers. They're dustless, they're a combination, they can be dustless and water, we take area-city streets, okay? All the village streets, they will be maintained. If you have a problem, hit the phone up, we'll be there. It's not a problem. I meant, we're, we're, I'm there probably, I got up at four this morning, I'm still here, and I basically am, am living the job Travis is. We've got a lot of dedicated guys. My team and I have picked, we've handpicked them. I would say that the youngest guy's got 25 years in the business to 20 years. So we have guys that have anywhere from, I'm going to say 40 years down to 20. So they're seasoned guys, know how to build this job, and we handpicked them. So, but we really need the assistance of you guys. We're going to be definitely utilizing, you've got to realize, we're going to be in the streets. We're not using cranes, we're limiting everything to cranes, we're doing a lot of stuff with backhoes, we're doing a lot of stuff with loaders that are localized. So we don't have cranes in the area. The Nassau or Tanner's, yes, that's a weekend work, and we will have cranes there, but on the main line, where we're doing the walls and the sound walls, we are going to be using backhoes, and that's how we're looking for our access, all right? To try to keep, it's just easier for us to utilize, and we're more universal piece of equipment, but that's the big thing. Along Main Street from Denton down to Nassau, we'll be utilizing that. We're trying to do it much work on a day shift to not piss you guys off, and we understand this noise is big, all right? Our machines are quiet. You can go around, the biggest thing you'll hear is the special backup alarms that are in, they're all noise mitigated, but our machines are very quiet. All the dust will ratings are way down on them. They're special machines, they've got soundproofing in them, so we looked at everything. You're going to see everything, you're going, "Holy moly." Every piece of equipment we bought is brand new, just about, I'd say 90% of it, just for the sound mitigation we have to, we have to meet with Long Island and the New York State requirements. So it's probably the best technology that's out there, and we are actually looking at every aspect of this job, from Floral Park to Hicksville, how we can build it the quickest, safest for the community, for our workers, for Long Island, and we just want to do a great job for you guys.
So I think, thank you, Bob. So I think what we should do, and Mayor, please, you can tell us how you'd like to go forward. I think, well, actually, let me just backtrack one second. So Bob had mentioned that you see a construction vehicle out on your street, we're blocking your driveway, which I don't anticipate, but if that's the case, this is how you contact us. And not only contact us, this is how you contact myself. Usually on a project like this, you think you send an email, you make a phone call, and no one will respond. That community hotline is managed in real-time, and I get an email and a printout of a description of the caller, location of the caller, if you choose to give it, and what the problem is. I have an emergency action plan in place that should, for instance, a truck be blocking your driveway, I go right to Bob, and Bob calls the super or whoever is the teamster, whoever's driving it, and that truck gets moved in as little as 15 minutes. This isn't going to be a hotline that's not answered. Same as the email. If you send an email to a community outreach or 3TC, that's going to go directly to my inbox. It's going to go to my inbox, but more importantly, it's redundant. It's going to go to a number of inboxes. So if there's something wrong with my phone or I'm unavailable, there are a number of people that are going to be able to make that alert to me, and I'm going to be able to act in real-time. We operate out of Westbury in 900 Merchants Concourse, the old DMV building right across from Fortune House, the old Fortune House. We are co-located, the MTA and the ALWR on the second floor, Bob and our team are on the fourth floor. That means real-time answers to real-time problems. We have a website, larexpansion.com. We provide updates monthly. We provide real-time alert updates should we, an activity be moved forward or wasn't accounted for. And we just instituted an eBlast system where if you do sign up, and we'll have a sign-up sheet for anybody that would like to get updates on the project, you'll get, you'll get updates in real-time as they happen, coming directly from our office. It's, it's pretty rare in a project of this size and magnitude that you're able to, in one phone call to Andy or to the community hotline, get directly to the project source. And that's a key element of what we're trying to do here. So along those lines, and again, Mayor, please direct me, I think we'll open up the floor, talk about use of Tullamore and the cow, and see, see if we can't come to an amicable resolution that the village and ourselves can go back and have a real conversation about.
Can you actually make sure that this email led to Joe PowerPoint?
Sure, absolutely. So it's posted on our website.
Actually posted on the website.
Sure, and we, we've had a number of presentations that I've sent to states, which are also posted on our website, which you guys can feel free to link or post yourself.
Thank you.
Sure.
Generally, we say our name, you know, we're there.
Hi, I'm Sarah Stier. I live at 237 Kensington, which is two in from the train and right by that, the new access gate that's right there.
Can you?
Yeah.
Can we share?
So.
How long?
So we're right by the access gate, two in from the train, three-minute walk to Maryland. Excited about all the positive changes and understanding certainly for the greater good and dominant domain and so forth. What obviously concerns me, I have three small children, we already have trucks parked in, or worker vehicles parked in front of our house this week, and definitely affects our way of life in terms of children running to their friends' house and children running their bikes. But mostly what I'm concerned about is the cow, because that's where our children play a good amount and visit their friends and play with. And if that's going to be used as a staging area, and my question is if that's a done deal or not, and if it is a done deal, what the safety precautions will be, what the cleanup methods will be once they're done. And also, when it was used as an EPA testing site, there was an EPA testing well in that area, is that at all a concern, in terms of disturbing that area, the ground soil, the water that was potentially tested? Is that a question? Is it my question?
Okay. No, it's not a done deal.
Right.
We'd actually like to understand, sort of on a daily basis, what does that mean? Again, the only reason we're thinking about it, collectively thinking about it, is, as you said, just make it an exaggeration, but it's, so it's really clear. If without the staging areas, they'll be in the village for 30 months. With the staging areas, it's 11 months. That's something we should all think about, is it worth that trade-off? That's just one of the things we're thinking. So I would like to know, sort of, and I've asked this before, just pick a day, if you had the cow back, or a piece of Tullamore, how this would work? What would you be doing, fenced in, not fenced in, when you deliver your stuff, when you, how would it work?
So, and again, just to back up the mayor, we're here to talk about it, so nothing's been finalized. And, you know, we're, we appreciate your feedback, and that's why we're having this conversation. Bob, maybe you can get into sort of some of the daily activities that would be happening, you know, during, during the area, in the area, if we were to utilize.
If we did utilize either, either Tullamore or the cow, first, there would have an eight-foot-high concealed fence all the way around it with a access gate, and that would be monitored. I'd have a guy in the yard at all times when we're working. We would have a guy outside, because wherever the gate access is, we're concerned about the residents and the kids. That's the first thing, anything coming in and out. If we are moving equipment in and out, we have spotters of every piece of equipment, plus a guy at the gate. So we have analyzed that for safety precautions. If we do get the compound or one of the playgrounds, we will have an eight-foot-high fence with, it's going to have green screening on it, so you can't see inside. It's most likely going to have potentially lights in there just when we're working, so we have some lighting for the men. Gates locked, it will have screening on the gate, so you can't get in, none of the kids or anybody will be able to get in. I mean, I'm not going to say they can't climb over, you know, but we are going to take every precaution, and it's going to be sealed 100% on both of the areas. We take it very serious. What are we going to put in there? We're going to put precast sections in our equipment in there. This is going to lead, the cow will lead directly into the railroad. We're still going to have an access fence along the railroad that doesn't come down, we'll have a gate there, so that if something happened, you cannot get into the railroad, that's sealed, it'll be sealed up. The Tullamore location, as we're still going to have our eight-foot-high fence screening a gate there, and we're going to utilize that to come across the street, off across Main Street, and into the right-of-way with our materials. The tri, the two yards would be used for bringing our precast in, and it would just be a better access, more mobility to get the materials to the site. And, but it's really a, it's an easier access point for, for us to unload, stage, and get the materials into the right-of-way quicker for building practices. That's the whole key to that. But it would definitely be a huge success. If it was approved by the village, we would sit down, we would have a whole mitigation plan, how the yard has to look, they'd have to approve it, all this would all go through the village and 3TC. There's nothing to do with Long Island, it'll be a private between the village and 3TC. Long Island Railroad, everything that's going on, but it'll be the agreement between the village and 3TC, whatever they wanted for prep phase, we go through everything, agree on everything. We just went and go in there and do what we wanted, we have a construction plan, a layout plan of how we're doing it. So, so it'll be approved by the village, though.
Yeah, and one thing, and one thing that I'd like to address as far as the ground, what's underneath the ground, is the Long Island Railroad did two years of testing along the right-of-way before this project even kicked off. 3TC is committed to looking into the ground and making sure that any earth movement we're doing, anytime we disturb the soil, we are testing the soil before we do that activity. Not only are we testing it, we have the strictest guidelines on any construction project in New York for how to mitigate any contaminants if they are found, from the minute they're located and found, to which sites they go to, how they get there, what trucks they're transported on, and how that contaminant is handled. The good news is- The good news is, is that we're getting preliminary results back in areas that we're starting to do some pre-preparatory work. And those results have been far greater, far better than I had envisioned. We've seen very little, if no, contaminants other than oil. And again, we are testing everywhere we're digging. The village and, and 3TC is committed to being as transparent as possible. We will give those results the minute they are in our possession to the village, and we encourage the village to share those with all the residents, and that's across the corridor.
Again, I'm trying to understand, so they, let's just say, you use Tullamore or a piece of Tullamore. So would you deliver things once a week, every day? How they, what if they have twelve trucks just sitting there, and you get access to the track? Once the twelve, twelve trucks are there, they're just staying there? So you're not using the screens in and out for the twelve trucks you need for the?
The trucks, the trucks will be staged, and they're going to be radio-controlled, whereas you'll have a truck being offloaded and a truck staged. There's not going to be trucks all up and down the blocks. We have that figured out. So we have a staging program where we're going to turn around and we're loading, and we're leaving the yard. And as the trucks get unloaded, we will have one sitting there ready to be offloaded as well. He'll be, he'll be, we're shut off, but we'll meet our environmental code. And then once that guy gets offloaded, he'll go either right into the right-of-way, or into one of the staging areas if we get one. If not, we go right into the right-of-way with it. Now, the thing with the, doing it without the help of the two locations would be, it would take us longer. The truck would sit there longer on the street, I'm going to be honest with you, because now that machine's got to go in and out a longer duration. The whole key of it is, the truck comes in, gets offloaded, and leaves. We could, our pre-cast supplier, how quickly he produces a pre-cast, we can get it offloaded and fed up to our storage areas, would be maybe three times a week, if we get enough material in there. So reduce the amount of trucks coming in, that's the big key, all right? So we're looking at that. So that's, it's helpful. And yes, it would reduce certain flow of traffic, of the truck traffic coming in, if we could use them, because we can put multiple pieces in the yard, other than two or three on the truck, from day it's offloaded and has to go into the right-of-way. Andy said best, the right-of-way for us is a twelve-foot piece of real estate. That's what we're going in, and we have to go out. So just think of it, it's just like a tunnel. I've done a lot of tunnels in my life, and you're going to go in one way, you can only come out one way. That's how you have to build it. We don't have access to the whole right-of-way along the side. So you're going through the gates with the piece, walking in and coming out. So that's why it's a little less disturbance if we can get these two areas where it's not a, it's a thirty-two-square-foot piece of concrete going in. That's the face of concrete you guys will see on the finished product. So that one, just take thirty-two square feet and look at that wall of where we're going to be in your backyard, and that's what we're going to build. And that's every piece that's going to come out, it's like putting Lego blocks together. It's a little bit more serious than that, but that's what you really have to look at. So these yards do help us. So if a truck does pull up to the gate, Mayor, he's going to get offloaded. If it takes him twenty minutes compared to five, at one, maybe one of the gate locations, or excuse me, one of the yard locations, it does, it does help us. But we're not going to sit there and you guys come out of your house and have ten trucks lined up, because Mark's going to call me and scream at me, and I'm going to get yelled at by Travis, and it's not a healthy, healthy situation, all right? So we realize that, and we have, that's why we have all our trucks are GPS guided. I know right where the trucks are, all right? And we can tell the trucks when they're coming up. I have a superintendent that's in charge of each area for the trucking of coming into your villages and the gates. So each area and each superintendent will be responsible for having dispatched these trucks coming into your areas, so.
And I, I think it's important to know, and to, to get to the mayor's point, is that, I'm, sorry. So we, you are going to see construction activity. It's not like you're not going to see our trucks in and around your area. What the yards and what the staging areas would, would help us is with minimizing that impact to the best of our ability. It's got time implications, it's got activity implications, it's got day shift implications, it's got delivery implications. The, using the staging areas in, in Long Island, and especially in this small area in Garden City, in De Niro and New Hyde Park, where, where space is very limited, it helps the process go quicker.
Do you guys have that quantified? In other words, I'm sure these residents would want to know. So if you do use Strawberry Fields, I guess people call it a cow, now that's new for me. So if, if you guys were to use that area, what's the net benefit? So, you know, it would have been thirty weeks we're there, now if you let us, you know, take this place over, it's fifteen. Or, you know, if it's just, hey, it makes it a lot easier for, for our trucks to line up. I'm not so sure that's such a sweetener for everybody, but if it's, hey, we get all this mess out of the way, plus we're adding air quicker, I think that's something that everybody's interested in hearing.
So that's a great question. I think it's hard to quantify. It's not a, it takes a schedule from twelve months to ten months. What it does is, when we say it makes it easier, it makes the means and methods of building this project easier. Do I anticipate if we use those staging areas, we will be out much quicker? Can we anticipate, meaning accelerated past the scheduled date? Yes. Can I quantify exactly what the timeframe is on that? Bob and I have talked about this extensively. It would be, it wouldn't be the right thing to do, because we can't tell you until we're actually in the area, using the access gates, using the staging areas, exactly what timeframe and, and time we would save. What I will stress is that we would save the amount of disruption that delivering materials on a daily basis without a staging yard from Hicksville would cause. And I think that's a big deal to people that live on those local roadways with those access gates, where instead of keeping things in a centralized location within the village, you're now forced to take that material from off-site, bring it in, and have, even though those trucks are dispatched and GPS-located, and they have all the bells and whistles, and they're retrofitted, and they are quiet, you're still going to have to have that delivery come in and leave same time, as opposed to having a centralized place where that delivery, those materials stay, and then the trucks leave from that central area. And in the case of Tullamore, that passes no residential houses when it crosses the street to go onto the right-of-way.
So from a logistics standpoint, you're saying it's about delivery and storage on-site, not necessarily reducing the number of deliveries?
It's availability of the materials, where you can have a site to build the walls, whatever, that's the key. If you have the materials, and a crew's going to work more efficiently, well, your production goes up.
Sure, you guys don't want to say that, you're going to cut the duration of the project, because you don't want to be caught saying that in public. But I guess these guys want to know, if it's, so it won't produce a number of trucks. If there's a hundred deliveries, there's still going to be a hundred deliveries. It's just that you guys get the benefit of storing it plus what you need it. So you won't have to call Hicksville, you can say, I need three blocks today, all three are delivered there on Wednesday, and that sequentially on the day you need it.
Correct. Somewhat, I think it's important to realize that we have a timeline in which this project will be finished by. We have contractual obligation to finish it by December of 2022. And there's severe monetary penalties placed upon 3TC by the railroad, by the MTA, should we not accomplish it. So while yes, it is about, as you would say, making it easier to build. The schedule will be adhered to whether or not we have a staging area now. So it's not going to reduce the amount of trucks. No, what it is, it's going to reduce the amount of visibility that you see when those trucks are able to be dispatched and coordinated.
And it may help your schedule.
But again, whether it helps our schedule in this area and doesn't.
I'm not trying to be funny, I'm not trying to be contentious at all. I'm just, I'm trying to get the net benefit.
That's the goal.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
Benefits from, from this.
The village, the village would benefit, as, as the mayor has said on a number of occasions in our presentations, because what it does is it takes the, the, the means and methods of construction and departmentalizes them to a specific area. And that helps the, that helps the process.
With its own downsides, too, like you said, there are lights, there's, you said lights, and immediately everyone's, you know what I mean? Like, you know, it's, there are things that are contentious about it, but I, I think you guys have to put some thought to, what's the benefit for us? Well, I, I hate to sound like a jerk, but what is in it for us to do that?
You're not sounding like a jerk, and this young lady has been standing here for a long time, so.
I, I just have one question. Would you be using these staging areas just for the construction in Garden City? Or would you be doing it for other areas as well?
Just Garden City. We have other areas that we're looking to work with, for instance, Floral Park, New Hyde Park. We're, we're having the same discussions across the corridor for spaces where staging is available, which is very minimal.
Once you've finished your round?
Correct. Once we finish in Garden City, we would return that, depending on the agreement with the village, we would return that area to either restore it, or allow the village to utilize the funds and, and restore it and upgrade, or do whatever they, whatever the agreement called for.
Hi, my name is Solis Sobron. I live directly in front of the cow, where we're speaking about my house is the second house in. If you fence off the whole field, and you have to gain access into the field, the only way you can gain access is on Brixton Road or on Kilburn, because there are two houses on Maryland Avenue. So you're going to be bringing trucks either down Brixton or down Kilburn to access onto this field. How is this not going to affect the residents who live on that block? And aside from that, you have bus service on both these areas for, for the children that live around the field.
The buses, we get five buses today, they were stuck. Yeah, that affected us.
So to answer your question about disruption, yes, this project is going to disrupt the daily, daily activity. It's not going, and again, I, I would love to know and, and get some more information on which trucks were blocking those streets, because we weren't made aware, and I, I don't know, and maybe you, I don't think you know either, from what I'm getting, as to who that was. That said, this is going to be impactful. It's not going to be easy. We are going to, as good neighbor contractors, do our best to build this project, which is unprecedented, in such a small area, and we have to utilize space, and space is so limited. So we're not just utilizing your room.
I understand that, I'm not disputing that point. But the point is, if you live on Brixton or Kilburn, that has to be the access point because of the house on Maryland.
Yes.
So now, if I live, obviously, on the second house from the railroad, I constantly have trucks coming in and, in and out with deliveries. Let's face it, it's not going to be five minutes where you're going to unload your trucks. That's probably going to be a few hours for you to unload your equipment into this field. And not even that, the aesthetics, my, my house faces onto this field. So for the next few years, I have to look at your stuff, at your equipment, your, whatever you have.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I.
I mean, I shouldn't have to live the next three to four years in my house, looking at backhoes and retention walls, and whatever it is you have.
Instead of green space.
Instead of green space.
Sure, so as far as years are concerned, we won't be in Garden City for four years. I think that's important for you to understand.
I appreciate your timelines, but let's face it, we all know that timelines.
See, I think, and we've heard that comment, and I think that that's why I, I explained in the beginning, and would be happy to explain to you, that's why this is a design build. This isn't a design bid build, where we bid a project that's already been designed, and then we take our time to build it. We cannot go past certain limits. We have contractual obligations, unlike what you're used to, which is the contractor comes in, wins a project, and does what he wants. We can't do that. The MTA and the railroad gave us strict guidelines and timelines of how long we're able to work in certain areas. So we're not planning on being in Garden City, for four years. We're not planning on working in, outside of your backyard for longer than we have to. And when we're building a retaining wall, it doesn't just get built, and we don't just stay there, we build it and move along. So while yes, we'll see construction activity for a certain duration of time outside your door, it is by no means years of green space being taken by our staging area.
I understand that, but if you also look at the width and the depth of the streets to bring trucks into this residential area and to unload, people, I go to work, my husband goes to work, everybody on this block, you know, is coming in and out. How, how are we going to get past your trucks? I mean, if, and for the board of trustees, if you visually know this area, you have the two houses, you have the railroad, you have Kilburn, you have Brixton, you have to come down via Kilburn or Brixton. The residents on these streets need access to their homes, need access to their driveways. The buses come down my block on a regular basis, in the morning hours and in the afternoon hours.
So we've coordinated with schools, we've coordinated with your emergency service personnel, and we understand, and we've actually gone as far as to incorporate those bus schedules into our traffic management plan. So I think it's important for you to realize, we're not just coming in and saying this is how it's going to go. We are coordinating with all the aspects of your village, including the residents right now, to make sure that we can limit those disruptions. With regard to access to your street and driveways, we have strict requirements, and as I said before, as far as emergency action plan. If that were the case, which I, I don't envision, but it certainly could happen, if you called that number sitting right there, that truck would be moved in a matter of minutes, not hours, not weeks, minutes. That's my job. And I think it's really important for you to realize that that is a realistic scenario. Yes, there will be times where a truck is on your roadway, but it won't be blocking your driveway. And it won't, and, and by the way, it won't be left unmanned. We have a contractual requirement not to leave any unmanned trucks. So if there's a truck sitting there, and it's in your way, either you're welcome to get out and ask it to move, but if you don't feel comfortable with that, you can call that hotline, and that truck will be moved instantaneously.
Can I ask a quick question, too? Is it kind of an either-or? I mean, we've been talking about Tullamore, a part of Tullamore. We're talking about the fields across from these people's house. Is it an either-or, is it everything? What are you, what are you looking for?
It's not an either-or.
Just because, you know, in particular with this green, piece of green space has just basically deadened. It's, it's even logistically, it's a difficult spot, but, so is it an either-or, or is it? Because I could imagine Tullamore might be an easier kind of.
Wait a minute.
No, no, I mean, in terms of, in terms of.
That's an access, right, cow pasture? Those roads are an access point? So you're going to have vehicles there, whether you use that or not?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, 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 there's deliveries down there apparently, either way. The issue is, do we want a storage?
Does it make it, maybe like you said before, does it quicken the disruption time, or the noise, whatever it is, by using it for now?
Mayor, the other thing we looked at, too, was, I forget your name, but I apologize. We have analyzed, and we're meeting with the school districts, we have met, and one of their concerns was pickups in the morning and drop-offs in the afternoon. So one of the reasons why we're going to the villages, is to store some material into these yards, so that we, we might not make deliveries, and that's what we're trying to organize now, where we don't have the trucks coming in at specific, an hour and a half in the morning, while your kids are being picked up from school when they're being dropped off. We're trying to put this into our schedule, and it's tough. But that's one of the reasons why we're going to the different villages, and we're trying to find areas where we're against the right-of-way, where we can feed the building of the, of the walls, where we have storage of materials there, why we can't truck in. We're, we understand that all the villages we met, the big concern is with the schoolchildren, the busing, kids walking, and we have, we acknowledge all that, and so.
Can you give us, so sorry, could I just get to the answer of my question? Which is, is it either-or, or is it both?
No. It's not, it's not, it's not an either-or situation, we don't get one, we don't want the other.
Yeah.
So we would like to talk about both of them, and they do, they are separate.
Can I ask a question as far as the deliveries? Are you, are you anticipating a delivery every day? And how, and if so, how many deliveries per day do you anticipate?
We're still analyzing that, but, but it's basically how the pre-caster supplies us with the walls. So we're looking at, we're meeting with our pre-casters now, they're close to going into fabrication, the shop drawings, all that. So how, it's going to be based around the pre-caster supply, because we'll have multiple walls going up at one time.
So the answer is you probably have multiple deliveries each day?
Yes.
And we'll also be transparent about that when we do have that information. We're not just going to come in and just deliver. We're going to have another meeting, we're going to come visit this board meeting, hopefully again, and we'll let everyone know what that plan is when it is established.
I'm Tom Markku, I live at two oh two Kilburn Road, I've been a resident for thirty-six years. I realize that this LIRRR project is going to be revolutionary. After it's completed, the service will be much better. It will affect the service from Garden City in a very positive way. So I know that the goals of this project are very important to the region and to Garden City. But being at the end of Kilburn Road, and having my backyard go up against Tullamore Park, I'm not really, I, I realize the amount of inconvenience that everyone here who lives at the end of Kilburn, Wickham, and some of the other roads there that end up on Main Avenue is going to be tremendous. And we realize we're going to have to deal with that. But to take Tullamore. with that. But to take Tullamore Park and make that a staging area, I think that's unconscionable. And I ask the mayor and the Board of Trustees to say no.
And another question, are you gonna be working seven days a week, or just five days a week? And it's gonna be twenty-four-seven?
The bridges and the grade crossings are gonna basically be working, the grade eliminations are gonna go on a weekend, but we're gonna be working multiple shifts on the grade cross eliminations, or trying to keep the walls for a long day shift. So we're gonna be right behind the residents, but the bridges and the grade crossing eliminations will work multiple shifts.
And include weekends?
Yes. The grade crossings and the bridges, yes.
Yes.
Can I just follow up on what the gentleman said? I don't think you, you guys are asking for the entire Tullamore park. But you're saying that, given, again, we're looking for if there's any benefit to any, if there's, if you hear them say they took part of the baseball game or something, and it would cut six months of budget out of it, is that okay, you guys, or no? I'm asking you this seriously. There's just no, you'd rather deal with pain and the deliveries?
They can't see how long it's running.
Yeah, no, I, I realize that. So I'm asking you, if they come back and they say, hey, it is actually six months less, and here's the benefit, is that, you know, just you would.
Like if they gave us the timeline and said, Denton Avenue, the New High Park Road will be done within one year, and they specified what the, what the exact time was, and the benefits of putting the, the materials in Tullamore Park, maybe we could, maybe we could have a better fix for that. But even then, it's, it's just not, I mean, I know there's a lot of new people that moved in my block. Their kids are at the park all the time.
I was at the park my whole life, so I, I love the place. I'm just saying, you know, again, they have, they're making a proposal, and, you know.
And I think the proposal is I have to use somewhere else to store the stuff. Because it shouldn't be on one of our parks.
But the, the issue raises, the access points then will be more frequently disrupted. Am I getting that broadly? And again, I'm agnostic to it at the moment. I'm just, I'm just trying to state the facts here, so we can all have a nice dialogue about it. I just, you know, again, you guys obviously are on the tip of the spear there. We, I don't wanna dismiss it out of hand if you, someone was to say, you know what, if they came back and presented a plan that showed us time, simply, is that okay or no?
If you're saying absolutely not, then it's absolutely not.
I just would wanna know.
If I could say something on this, I understand the frustration of anyone who lives near Tullamore. First of all, I probably pass Tullamore, I can't even think how many times a week, and the amount of parents and children that I see that play there, it is probably one of the most used parks that we have here. I also, trustee West, and in the West, we're gonna have tremendous amount of construction, probably the biggest part of the project will be New High Park Road. And for the people who live next to the railroad station, and anywhere near there, and I am relatively close to that, there's gonna be a lot of noise, and a lot of disruption for that period of time. The reality of it is, is that this is coming, one way or the other, this is coming. And I think, I understand it's an emotional issue. I understand you said they're gonna say, with the balance, you know, I would prefer not to touch Tullamore, I prefer to leave it alone for the kid. But the thing of it is, is that, again, as doing a project as massive as this, you are talking about a lot of vehicles, a lot of workers, a lot of deliveries. And one of the things I just ask you to think about is, isn't it better, and again, I know your initial reaction would be no, like I said, just ask me to think about this, is that if I can shorten the span of time that this disruption is there, and if we provide a staging area for them, listen, myself personally, do I believe that a truck is gonna come there with a prefab piece of thing and be unloaded in five minutes? Not a chance in the world, okay? That guy will probably be there for twenty minutes to a half hour. But my point is, is that with all the other deliveries and all the other things that are there, you know, we have to also think about, some people mentioned their kids going to visit their friends or whatever. So if I'm sitting there, and if I'm looking at, again, remember, when he said four years, he's talking about the whole project, not talking about that one section. But if I could take that one section, and instead of it being twelve months, let's say it's ten months or nine months, that to us, that to me, is something that if I was a resident, I would think about that. In addition to that, when these guys are finished with Tullamore and finished redoing it, they would then redo the park or whatever, and we probably would end up with a better product even than we have right now. So all I'm saying to you is, is that it's kinda like when you're getting the construction done on your block, nobody likes it when they mow the road, nobody likes when they tear it all up, nobody likes when they're replacing the, the, you know, the sidewalks and everything else, and cut the trees and the curbs and everything. But when they're all done, they sit there for the next twenty years, and you're like, the street looks nice. So like I say, I, again, I appreciate getting your feedback, I'm just saying to you, just trying to look at that, which is what we're trying to do from a give-and-take point of view, so that's.
Yeah, and if I could just piggyback that, I should have prefaced with, we are looking to utilize these staging areas for one year, not four years. So we will come up with a schedule as to when we would take Tullamore and the Cow, and we were to be allowed to utilize it, and we would then return it within that year. Sorry, yes?
Blake Spencer, Wickham Road, live in the end, back up to Tullamore. He kinda casually skipped over the hours of operation, and also mentioned lights, a little concerning as far as the, the work activity. Like a little bit more clarification, are the hours specified? Will you be in and out at certain times of the day? And then lights bother me very much.
Lights are only used for the yard when we're gonna be working in the yard, they're shut off when we leave.
Yeah. That big. Do you work through the evening? Do you work through six? Is it eleven? Is it all night? Is it this day? We already know now that it's gonna be weekend, weekdays and weekends.
So, so as far as the retaining walls being built, we're looking to try and do it in a long-term day shift, meaning eight AM to eight PM. And that includes not delivering and not, not interrupting the bus service for kids to and from school. So the answer to your question very bluntly, right now is eight AM to eight PM. As far as the grade crossings, which is what Bob was talking about when he was discussing twenty-four hours, seven days a week, that's when we're actually shutting down Covert Avenue, for instance, and we are building an under-grade crossing to eliminate the at-grade crossing on the road. So those are the twenty-four hour locations. But within those twenty-four hour locations, I really wanna stress this, we are not the Wild West. The MTA and the railroad, who have representatives here, are holding us to incredibly strict standards. Bob would tell you, the strictest standards he's ever worked on there. So we are monitored constantly throughout every aspect of this project to make sure we are not exceeding those noise areas.
Right, and I believe we all can appreciate this PD and, you know, ultimate end goal here, but, you know, some of these, some of these points made are a little, little concerning, and, and I'm not the one you should worry about, it's my wife.
You just changed the equation, you're saying that. There's a video of this, I'm sure you know.
That's a very wise, very good.
Can I mention also one thing? So with the hours of operation, you mentioned you guys, three TC, you have considerable penalties if you're late. Do you reserve the right to kick into overtime if you're running behind? Eight to eight becomes eight to midnight. Then you guys are working two-ten's, you're working over the weekends. You guys, do you reserve the right to change those operation hours if you guys fall behind? Because then, you know, all of a sudden, the lights go from, you know, eight to twelve, and you go, look, we're late, this is what we gotta do, we gotta get out of your hair. Or is it, you guys are held to that block of time?
Your best production work now is, we all know, is daytime, and that's what we're trying to, with building retaining walls, that's what we're trying to accommodate, and try to build it from eight to eight. I like to build it in eight hours, but we have, as like I said, the precast is being delivered, comes in, and that's gonna be, gonna, it's gonna set the schedule where X amount of pieces are coming in, they go in, and the delivery is gonna, from the precast back, is gonna set our schedule. Our fallback is to work Saturdays and to work Sundays on a day shift. I don't wanna work the walls behind the residents at the night shift. The grade crossings, Travis said, we have no choice. They got shut down, we have six months and nine months at New High Park. To build these grade crossing eliminations are extremely difficult. So we're gonna be challenged there. But the walls are pretty basic, it's just, it's just, they're linear. They're variable and they're linear, and they're, they're not too difficult, but like I said, it's a lot of pieces that have to come in to build it. We're not casting in place, we're going to precast. So that was one huge great design on our end, that we were able to do that, and make this whole precast modular section that works. And they're finalizing the design now, but that, that is the key, is to go through precast sections. So we're not having concrete trucks come in here, it's less, it's less disruptive. So when you see a piece come in, that's a finished product. So when you look at the face of the wall, that's what you're gonna get as a finished product. So when we place that, that wall is finished for that segment. And that's the whole key, is now, the, the Cow is gonna be used between Nassau and Harrods, okay, in Garden City in there. We are gonna come up out of, out of Harrods as far up as we can, okay, to where we can utilize Harrods Road to come up along the, the right of way there. And then the pit is gonna be used to build the station and from Denton Road, or Tullamore, excuse me.
Can I just clarify, like, so you have a very strict timeline, talking about the sound, talking about the lights, talking about the hours. So if you did not have these two staging areas, would that increase the amount of truck traffic and people working through? What, what impact if you don't have?
It, it would increase. Potentially, we'd have to go to a night shift. It would definitely impact us, because now you're going through per gate, it's a little more difficult. It might extend things out if we get behind schedule, and we would have to go to a night shift. There's no doubt about, I'm not gonna lie to you guys, what that would be, the backfall of it is going through longer hours. The only way you can build it is to pick up the time, and it's longer hours, and get the wall built. So, would there be deliveries? The deliveries would have to be staged at that for the guys to come in. So that's why the two yards are so critical.
Just a quick question, I know you're gonna do a question, but just a quick question. Do you put the tracks in first, and then the wall, or do you put the wall in first, and then the tracks?
Wall goes in, we have to go in clear, we excavate and build the wall. So all the soil goes out in a specific area with our dump trucks, goes off-site. Travis said, all the soil has, all the soil analytical is done. From soup to nuts, we know every characterized soil in that. So we know what disposal facility it has to go to. It's really coming up great soil right now. It's very clean soil, which we were like shocked, which is great for you guys, so it's very clean. That's step one. Step two is the precast will come in, we have precast footings coming in, where the modular wall section will sit on, and basically, we put a wall section down, we backfill it with stone or a select fill, and we tamp it, we continue going vertical and linear, and that's how we build the walls.
So walls first.
So that's my question. First, first we're putting up the sound wall, and then you're gonna do putting in the third track?
The retaining walls.
Retaining walls are first.
Retaining walls, right, okay, fine.
Sorry.
Hi, I'm Adam Tremblay. I live at 228 Kilburn, so the tune from railroad on Kilburn. I have a couple of comments, and then one question, because a number of my questions were addressed over the course of the last conversation. So the first thing is, I work in professional services. So on principle, I understand the idea of designing and scoping and commercially assessing and agreeing scope of work, and a set of deliverables over a given timeline. And so I wouldn't pretend to know your reality, or exactly what it takes to do a project like this, but over the course of my professional life, I very often agree things and find out over the course of those projects, that some of the assumptions I made will make it exceedingly difficult for me to deliver those deliverables on that fixed timeline. In cases like that, I don't get the opportunity to go to my clients, or any of the folks I'm working with, and say, hey, do you mind if I take these shortcuts that are going to moderately, moderately inconvenience some of your people, so that I can deliver what I said I could deliver on the timeline? So on principle, I think it's a little bit objectionable to be coming back now, given that when this project kicked off, we heard from your community ambassador that there was no chance you would be using that location for exactly the purpose that you're asking to use it for now. So that's one. The second is, during the discussion of the firehouse, the building number two, whether it's a steel shed, or a renovation.
They may, don't they miss?
They may, I don't know. Depends on the implications. There were a couple of comments made. Trustee Truvay, you talked about the aesthetic value. Trustee Bolibruck, you talked about the look and character of our community. Trustee Menudo, you talked about the fabric of the community. And you both gentlemen mentioned the idea that this project would be completed in as respectful a manner as possible. Temporary as it may be, I think using the field and using the Cow would violate all of those things that we said were incredibly important to one of the other projects in the community. And I think the same standard should hold here. There's an exceptionally high threshold that you'd have to demonstrate that this is an essential part of the project. And unless you can demonstrate that, I don't think it's something that we should even be considering. And finally, until, unless and until, you can give us very concrete specifications of exactly how much of the field and the Cow you need, for how long, I don't think it's, and how, and to trustee Menudo's statement earlier, exactly what the savings in time and energy and effort would be, and I think that have to be material for any of us to consider it, I don't think that this is a proposal that we should even be considering. So my question to you is, what would it take for you to let us know exactly how much of this space you would need, for how long, and how much time would be saved?
So two of those questions we can approach, which are, you can certainly tell you what we're planning on utilizing as far as area within the field. Timeline for staging, as I said previously, would be a year. So when we started that clock, would be dependent upon the agreement with the village, and when our work was actually gonna commence here. Maybe you can just get into briefly what we plan on utilizing as far as Tullamore, and how much area we plan to use.
It would really be up to the village, what area they would give us for storage. That's really what it has to do with. We need a specific area, because the precast sections, like I said, are thirty-two square feet, and they're roughly about ten foot to twelve foot long. So you need enough, big enough area where you can store enough pieces to make it, you know, workable. That's.
What would be a rough estimation of how many pieces you're talking about?
Probably wanna keep at least twenty in stock. In old times, that would be the key, that would get enough flow for crews to keep working, you know, efficiently. That would be the key. But it would really be up to the village on what area they could give us in either area, in the Cow or Tullamore.
Yeah. And can I also just go back to what you had said, the first comment? We are not trying to be disingenuous. We are trying to have an open dialogue.
I know, it's suggested.
No, 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 I just, I just mean as far as, we're not coming to you at the ninth hour saying this is our only option. We're coming to the community and saying, this would help the construction process, not just for us, but the disruption within the community.
And I think, yeah, and I think you'll have to let us know how materially it would help. Because again, at the start of this project, a number of us were very explicit in saying, are you even considering using this field? And they were told emphatically no. So something has changed, and I don't know that you should bear the burden.
Yeah, and nothing's changed as far as, we're not telling you anything, we're just asking. So I wasn't here at the.
Here's threatening night work. If, if you don't get to use it, is the, where I'm like, were you always planning night work? Were you always planning night work? And now you're saying we can avoid night work.
That's a hamada.
Yeah, that is why. But are you, yeah. Are you, now you're saying if you don't get the staging areas, you may need to do night work. So that's kind of a scare tactic, when you're coming to the group and saying.
That's reality, yeah. I'm not gonna sit here.
I know, I know it's reality.
I'm not gonna sit here and lie to you guys, I've done this for thirty-three years, and it's reality. If you guys are, we're building third track, and we're on a day shift schedule, and we start falling behind, the alternative is to work Saturdays, Sundays, and weekends.
That, that's fine, but what I'm, what I'm saying, was that always part of the project plan? And now you've said, oh, if we got these staging areas, we could actually avoid that potential reality.
We have always anticipated working multiple shifts on this job because it's so massive.
So to answer your question, what we actually did was, we took it from, we are going to work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and we're trying to reverse engineer.
You're trying to mitigate.
We're trying to reverse engineer to a different solution, which is work with the local village. And it's not just Garden City, it's the villages across the corridor, to come up with an amicable solution that'll help us build this project more efficiently, faster, and with less disruption to the community.
So you're really saying it is up to the people impacted, so the people sitting here, with you guys hopefully supporting us, to weigh in and say what we feel would be the least to weigh in and say what we feel would be the least impact to those living along the railroad? Whether it's taking away our parks or working in it?
I think, I think I could still add on to that and say, there needs to be some benefit for these people for you to do this. You're clearly getting a benefit. You're, you know, I'm sure, just as there are penalties for you guys to finish late, there's probably some, you know, incentive for you guys to get done early here. If not just to get out of this process, you know, sooner than later. But, you know, on the face of it, these, there's very little to, for anyone to sink their teeth into on this because, you know, just as these projects go, and I think that's the general saying, you start out with the best intentions and then, you know, things happen. You know, you will find bad soil that the, you know, the Department of Health wants you to take a second look at it, take away more, and you'll have delays, and then, you know, the next thing you know, we're going to have another dialogue about why you have to stay for another six months or something like that. So I would say this is a very careful decision for everybody, and we're not taking it lightly, and we hear what you're saying. I think you've got to come up with something, some benefit that we can understand.
I agree with trustee a little bit. I think we're quite frankly wasting our time moving forward tonight. I would like to suggest that you've heard what the residents are saying and what we're very, very, very interested in. And I would ask you to come back and see us again with more concrete proposals. We can go around and around and around for the next three hours, and we're not going to get anywhere until we have some commitments from you folks as to what you can do. I mean, can you save us time? Can you save us disruption? Can you work, can you shut those lights out at eight o'clock at night? Or do you have to keep them on all night long? Those are the kind of questions I think that we have raised tonight. I mean, I'll be more than happy to sit here for another two hours, but we're just going to go around in a circle until you have the answers that we are looking for, that the residents have raised them, and I think we're all looking for. I think it's silly to continue until we have those answers. And I might also say, maybe you don't have those answers, but I think it's important for us to make a decision for you to have those answers, because this is what we want to hear, and this is what the residents, I mean, we've now been at this for a little over an hour and a half, and this is what everybody is saying. They want some answers in order to solve, to figure out. You know, I think everybody would be more than willing to say, okay, I'll put up with six months of disruption rather than a year and a half.
So at least we have to know what we're talking about. So I respect that position tremendously, and I understand what you're saying. I think it's important to again reemphasize that this is a design build. So we're here very early on in the process for Garden City, as early as we can be. It would be, as I said before, disingenuous to come with a month to go and then throw this out at everybody and say, this is what we need and this is how we're operating. So we don't have a lot of those answers yet. It's being designed as we speak, with over seventy people back at Westbury designing this project. So we will come to you, and we will have those concrete answers at a certain point. Whether or not that's today, this was just the start at the request of the mayor that we came and were as transparent as possible approaching the stop publicly.
And I appreciate that, but I think also, I mean, I think we're premature. Until we hear what it really, we know there's some effect, but I really have a problem trying to figure out what that effect is. Am I going to, am I going to, am I going to save time for the residents by authorizing something like that? What hours are they going to be, et cetera? And I don't think, you know, you guys don't have any answers, I realize that. But maybe it would be better, we've heard what you have to say, maybe it would be better if you zero in on that and tell us, you know, how long is it going to take to get those answers?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your trustees. My question, if I may, it's, this is very, very important and everyone's very concerned. But unlike what trustee Bollbruck said, making the analogy of the road being paved, my question is more long-term about noise and something that we will not enjoy at the end of the process. And I'd like to preface my question with just saying, Travis, you mentioned a lot of things before about the inconvenience of gates and waiting at the gates and the whistles. And I find it extremely insulting. That's something we've dealt with for years, and it's only at a time when the Long Island Railroad has something to gain that this finally has an attention being brought to it. How many kids died at those grade crossings? Young drivers, kids who, you know, youth, what can I say? And the whistles, that the Long Island Railroad, when this project was in its infancy, they self-imposed these whistles, saying, you know, well, we think it's a good idea that we enforce ourselves to blow the whistle three times. And everyone said, what's with the whistles? Well, if we didn't have grade crossings, we wouldn't have to do it. You know, setting, planting the seeds for this project. It was self-imposed and it's insulting. And you're throwing out a buzzword there about mega bridges. As a member of a, an influential member of the wealthiest team security union in the country, local late seventeen, and the most influential union, I mean, hey, I'm a truck driver and I live in Garden City. So what does that say about that union? I know a bit about trucking, I'm a pirate. Ninety-nine percent of the trucks out there are thirteen-six or under. You're building the bridges to the New York State standards, fourteen feet. Every trucking outfit knows, avoid Garden City. You can't get through there. Avoid Garden City. So it is going to greatly increase the amount of truck traffic through our neighborhood. But the question specifically, and I saw it up there about the sound walls, what's the, what's the outcome? Because we know it's going to be more freight going through. And I'm in my house, I forgot to mention I'm on Phil Dare Road, I'm sorry. I can be in my house and I know when the train's going by, and I know when a freight train's going by. It moves the entire house. So we're going to have a lot more of that. So is it a net? Is it a wash? Are we benefiting? Are we going to in the long run have less sound? Because we're upping the ante here of the amount of traffic and the weight of the traffic. So what's being created is going to be a lot more, and how good is this wall? The Long Island Railroad is the noisiest train I've ever heard. And I work all over the country, and even as close as the Acela, it's much quieter. There's trains in other countries that have rubber wheels on them, and they're very quiet. So I don't think the Long Island Railroad cares much about Long Island residents. So that's the question, what is this wall going to look like? And how is it going to, how much sound are we talking about? Is it going to be something like we see on the Long Island Expressway?
Why don't I take that?
Sure.
Thank you for your comments. My name is Leslie, I'm the community outreach manager with the Long Island Railroad Project. These gentlemen were not involved during the environmental impact statement, so it's more appropriate for me to help answer some of these questions. And I'm gathering from some of your, from some of your comments that you may not have been that involved. So I'd be happy to sit down with you and go through the noise and vibration studies that were done as part of the EIS, which I think would inform some of your comments. So let's make sure I got these in order. But in terms of the forms, FRA, the Federal Railroad Administration, has certain requirements for forms. This is a safety regulation for blasting forms and acrode crossings. So you're right, the acrode crossings have been the sites of many accidents throughout the country and throughout Ohio. So the forms, the warning forms are law, that's not self-imposed by the Long Island Railroad. In terms of the walls, there were very detailed noise studies done as part of the project that included projected train numbers, not just current train traffic, but projected train traffic. So the acoustical analysis predicted that a sound wall of two to four feet in height would greatly reduce noise along the corridor. The reason many of them are being built eight feet high and up isn't necessarily to give additional noise benefits. In some places, that was a comment we got from residents throughout the corridor. We would like them to be higher, not for noise attenuation, but for visual reasons. We really don't like seeing these trains. We'd like noise walls to be taller. And then they became sort of a combination of a noise wall and an aesthetic wall. That's part of why 3TC has been consulting so closely with all the villages and all the towns on look of the wall, finish of the wall, because it's not just a concrete noise wall there for only a functional purpose. It's also for an aesthetic purpose. The bridges, right? Bridges or another?
Yes.
The mega bridges. So part of the reason Denton is not being wide, it's being raised to meet DOT standards, but it's not being wide, and I think that's what Travis was going with his comment about not building mega bridges. That was a comment we got very strongly from residents of the village of Garden City. So I want to reassure them, because it is late at night, you have not wasted your time being here. None of your comments have gone into a black hole. They did not go into a black hole during scoping. They did not go into a black hole during the DEIS, for those of you who commented during the DEIS. They went into memorandum of agreement. They went into, they changed the design. There was originally an overpass, there was originally a Maryland station with concrete and glass and a very different look, a very modern look. So your comments matter, we appreciate receiving them. There was no done deal for whoever asked that. There was no secret agreement, there's no secret schedule. Because it's design-built, we want to allow 3TC the flexibility to come with new ideas. Staging was not prescribed in their contract.
Does everybody in the room know what design-built means? That's like an industry term and it's very specific. Can you, like, show a hands, everybody know what that means? It basically means they don't have it all designed yet. They do it on the fly. I just want to clarify for everybody what that means. Because you stretch your head and go, what the hell is, what's she talking about? It means, it's like, unlike anything else, you wouldn't do this at home, obviously. You wouldn't just say, we're going to redo the kitchen, let's start, get the guy over here, demolish it tomorrow, and we'll figure out what kind of canvas we're going to get on Thursday. But that's kind of the method by which they're approaching this, which is why there's lots of gray. Just want to clarify that, that's the only term around, but I can see people going, you know.
And flexibility.
Yeah.
Well, unintended consequences as well.
Shh, sorry. Talk to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mike DiMartino, Wickham Road. Now, two primary concerns. One is safety and the other is quality of life. They talked about Tullamore Park, taking the ball field area. Well, I know I take my two grandchildren to the children's park five days a week. And we're going to have a major construction staging area in that park where the ball field is now, that will maintain the children's park. I got to tell you, my daughter has twins, my wife and I try to watch them in that park. I turned my head today and my grandson was about eight feet in front of me, out the side, heading towards the ball field. So that's a concern I have, like the safety aspect. The other aspect I have is the quality of life. My daughter moved to Garden City in December. I've been a resident of New High Park for forty-three years. She moved there for the quality of life. Now, I understand it's not your thing, okay? This is the, this has been in the works politically for a long time, and now it's here. But I am saying to the board, the quality of life of the people living on Tullamore Park, plus the safety of the kids, that's a real concern for me. It really is. Let me just ask, when you go down Townes Pond Road and you don't want to get tresselled and you're on Denton Avenue, you go look to the left, there is a huge parking lot. And it's owned by, it's Hud Truck Company. And I went to Hud Truck Company this afternoon, and I said, you rent out space in this lot. And they said, well, we have half the lot rented. It's huge, tremendous, we have half the lot rented and we use the other half for rental trucks.
Mike, it's the old propane, uh, the...
Exactly right.
Try to keep one question speaking of that.
I'm just, I just have to ask this, did you guys just look at that and all, did you check with the, I even went to one of the junkies on Denton Avenue, and they rent space for vehicular storage in their area. Was this checked out?
It was.
It was?
It was.
So you checked with that Hud place and there was no, I'm just asking, I don't want to put you on the spot. But this is a real concern for me, when, you know, my grandkids playing in the children's section of Tullamore Park, and right over there is a huge staging area. First, we're up the lower side in Manhattan. I know about staging areas, I know about truck traffic, thank God we have the subways here, I know about all that stuff. Okay, and it's just a concern, and that, my daughter moved to Garden City for the quality of life, and believe me when I tell you, six months or a year, there'd be no quality of life there. And my kids, my grandkids are two and a half years old. And also, that's the point that I just wanted to make.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Captain Nora for Maryland Avenue, I have two questions. If I understand correctly, this storage area is only going to be for these, the wall stuff?
Correct, precast.
Okay, my other question is, what about all the materials that will be, will have to be used to build the third track? Where is that stuff going to be stored?
As far as the track itself?
Yes.
So that is not what we're having a conversation around. That will not be stored within Tullamore and the cow. We're looking to utilize Tullamore and the cow to store retaining.
I can understand that, but could you give me an answer where that stuff would go?
So there's an option in our contract, which is at the end of this project, which is to install the third track after we've made it available, after we've made the room to actually install it.
Right.
So in four years, once we've completed our project and what we've been tasked to do, that's when we would have that conversation.
We're not even talking about the track yet.
Correct.
Yes, that is just what I hear. So, oh, you really, and I'm going to be a lady now.
Sorry.
I loaned to be a lady, I am not going to express what I really feel like I want to express. But this, we're just talking about the wall and the construction, we're not talking about laying the track yet? That's going to be year four, five, six, eight, ten, what?
Well, again, that's part of the option portion of our contract, but that's also going to be most likely done. And again, I would defer to somebody from the railroad to help me understand the means and methods. That's going to be done from the track itself.
So the only job, the only thing that your contract stipulates is building a wall?
No.
And elevating the bridges and the digging under?
So we're doing a number of things, an unbelievable amount of projects, small, mini projects within the four years. We are widening, we are enforcing, we are, as we said, eliminating grade crossings throughout the corridor. So I think it would, it would be, it wouldn't be right to call this project, you're just simply doing this. We're doing unbelievable things within the corridor. So we're making room for us to put the third track in, if that option's such.
Technically, to rephrase, you are doing the preliminary work prior to the laying of the tracks.
So why don't I jump in? Sure. So the way, if you look at all these different projects, and this is only showing the bridges, the stations, the third track.
The elevators and the alongs.
Right, this isn't showing the substations, utilities, and some other project components that are included in the project. So you don't build it all at once, right? It has to go in order. So in some areas, you need to build retaining walls first, so you have the site the way that you need it. And then, once you have a retaining wall, you need to put the fill in there, right? So you need to get things up to the elevation where they need to be. Utilities have to be moved out of the way before dog's trucks can come in and dig the underpass. So there's a sequence to things. So the way the project is being sequenced is complemented by the way the project is being funded. So this is probably more technical than we need to get, but the term completion scope, that's not some option that's hanging out there for some confusing year of twelve. It's all one cohesive project, but the way the contract is written, the way they're building it, it's sequence, and the funding is sequenced accordingly. So there are some items that are earlier in the contract than others. And the building of the third track is towards the end of the project. The actual installation of the third track is towards the end of the project.
I like the term you said, funding, because it wouldn't it be a big laugh if we got all this other wall stuff and then, whoa, the well went dry and we didn't have funding for all of this stuff? Okay, but perhaps even more important question that I have, now I know that some workers have been in the backyards of homes in the west trimming, removing water, vegetation, trees.
Not on private, backyards.
Right of way, yes.
Okay.
Um... Do your construction workers or in this case, people who are getting rid of the trees that might be in the way in the right of way, do you conduct background track checks on that?
So not only do we conduct background checks, we're helping with an unbelievable OSM standard, which we do background and drug screening for any person that works on this project, including all the executives, anybody that sets foot, subcontractor, employee of 3TC, anybody that's accessing the right of way goes through an unbelievably detailed background drug screening.
No, the background check goes through, it goes through the, it backgrounds them all the way back to the courts. It almost takes a week to get a background. It almost takes a week to get a background check done by an employee that's gonna work for us. That's free. We can't, we have a, a drug test and a background check before we can even think about hiring a guy. That has to come back clear, and then we can hire the guy.
Okay. Thank you.
And then we also have random drug tests. So that every quarter or every month, it's FRA. We have X amount of workers. We have to have a percentage of those guys randomly drawn by a computer that the guys don't know about, that they're just plucked, and they go take a drug test.
On-site.
Very strict, so.
Just don't have the practice to fit it.
Yes, Nick, one.
Yes, sir.
Brian Conlin, 230 Kilburn Road, so right at the end there. Quick comment, just about the access gates. So I shot an email off not that long ago. It's, it's not even installed correctly. So there's two gates right there, and kids can get right there if they have. And they've been on the other, they've been in the right way, so they're wrong. And if you can't get a gate incorrectly, how are you going to do all of these other things? The gate is held together, Andy was there, by a wire. A little wire that like, that's almost like if you open up a, you know, a little bread, a little twisty wire there. So if we're not getting the access gate incorrectly, how are we gonna get into all this other stuff? And have, you know, either a staging area there that's secure with lights and green. It sounds good. Sounds great, but that gate sucks. And if it's not held together correctly, it's two gates that are kind of lopsided, not even even. And I could fit through there. So like, that needs to be fixed before we even get to the other stuff.
So that's, it's a great question. And I wanna just give a real-time example of how this process works. Andy came to me right before this meeting. And I met with you, we met with somebody on the street today, whose children had either gone through or had access.
Not mine, I killed them, but, yeah.
I took my feedback. Bob was standing next to me, who, again, we're all here, we're all present. We're not just hiding behind some screen. Bob has already called and rectified that situation for tomorrow morning. So meaning, all those access gates will be sealed properly and will be taken care of.
And will all those rusty metal pieces that are out there, are they all gonna be picked up too? From, on the other side and in the field? Because there's also some rusty metal, you know, things that the kids were, had found in the field.
Within the right of way?
Uh, no, on the other side of the fence.
Outside of the right of way?
Yes.
So it's a little bit of both then?
Yeah, I understand.
Because we do have teenagers that go in there.
So the answer is yes.
Who knows? We'll send there, but they're there.
Sure.
We'll address it tomorrow.
Okay.
That's what, that's what that website's there for. Please get a hold of us right away if you have any concerns, don't wait.
So we were made aware of that less than three hours ago. And we've already enacted a plan to fix it. And that plan is not two weeks away, it's tomorrow.
And I think there's a lot of people here tonight that clearly are very close to the right of way. So you are probably gonna be the recipients of a community survey if you haven't already got one as part of a pilot test. So this is gonna be a quarterly survey that you're gonna receive. And the contractor, 3TC, has an opportunity to earn up to $4 million over the life of the project for what we're calling Good Neighbor for Today. So one of the questions on that survey is, the construction gates, the access gates in my neighborhood are locked and secured. And you're, you are voting on that. So if you say no, they're not gonna get their bonus for that quarter. So, so we look forward to hearing from you. But that's why 3TC's here. They don't have to be here tonight. They want to be here and share this idea that they have with you. That's why they're being so responsive about the hotline and the email. That's part of the program.
It's like you just said, Brian. You know, I said to Ben, you know, pick up the phone, make the call right away. I mean, we're here to do, we're here to solve problems as well. Provide information and answer questions and that sort of thing. And, you know, that's a perfect example.
Now we have your number, so we need to address it right away.
So how do you differentiate? Like, today there were several different kinds of workers on my block. And I couldn't tell who was fixing a roof on someone's house, or who was working on this project. And who was LIPA trimming trees, or who are your guys? Are they in any kind of identifiable hat, uniform?
Sure. We all have a 3TC vest on.
Is it the neon?
Yep, you'll see, it's, it's orange, yellow stripes, 3TC huge logo on the back. That's it, everybody has it who works for 3TC. But if you have a question, take a picture of the truck and send it to Travis, the hotline. And we'll, we've had three or four people already sent us pictures and it wasn't us working. But we had our utility guy find out it was PSCNG working for somebody else. And they got right back to the, to the resident and told him it wasn't us, but it would have to be PSCNG.
And Bob, every, every guy will have the name tag. Has a 3TC logo on there.
Morton, feel free, go up, you'll have his ID. They have to carry an ID on them all the time, okay?
That's anybody working on the project.
Yes.
Yeah, we've got a lot of great input. We appreciate it, not deciding anything. We got some more info we wanna get from them. So if anyone doesn't object, you move on.
I say one more thing.
Get another comment?
Sure.
Hi, my name is Melissa Geiger, and I live at 206 Kilburn. And I back up to Tullamore Park. So basically, this will be my backyard if they decide to use it. I just feel like since they are held to a time constraint and there are bonuses for finishing quickly, I don't know that using Tullamore will really make too much of a difference. I know they say it will, but I think they'll be bringing their trucks in there and delivering what they need to deliver anyway. And possibly overnight, even though if they use Tullamore, because they will get their bonuses. I also was questioning, you said you looked at the other places on Denton Avenue. Why were they not anything that you would be looking for?
So the first part of that is just to be very open and transparent. We get no monetary incentive to finish quicker.
No, okay. Well, you are held to a year though, correct? Or whatever you said.
Right, I, I just.
Or not four years.
No, just for the grade.
Just, right, it, it depends on the certain project element. So at Covert, at Covert, we have to close the road and return it within six months. At New High Park Road, we have to do our partial shutdown and return it within nine months. So, but there's no incentive for us to finish quicker. We wanna finish more efficiently.
You didn't say anything about a bonus?
Yeah.
There, there we did. There's a certain road opening incentive for grade, specific grade classes. The incentive program I'm talking about is a community, a Good Neighbor program. So that's not based on schedule, that's based on community feedback. They have the opportunity, you know, if, if gates are locked and they keep a clean site and residents fill out the scorecard, that's how we decide what compensation.
And then as far as some of the other locations that we've certainly looked at, and the last thing we wanted to do was come in tonight, and I didn't wanna be the guy that's taking your park. Again, I wanna let everybody know, I grew up 15 minutes from here, and I moved my daughter back. It was two and a half, 15 minutes from here. So I know this area well, and we are not looking to take your space just to take your space. Some of those areas that are north, on the north side of those bridges, our trucks can't get underneath the bridges in order to deliver the material.
Excuse me, excuse me!
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So, so we have explored a ton of options.
Right, you can't get under that bridge, but could you then go around and come under by Nassau Boulevard?
So, again.
Well, you guys gotta look at the one thing, it's logistics of the two yards.
Right, I know it's very convenient.
Well, it's not convenient because the logistics of it is that we're crossing the station. We have a major station rehab to do. And we have a bunch of walls that go through there from Denton all the way up. It does expedite the, the operation. And the Cow would be used from Nassau down to Harris. Not so far mark, because we're gonna, like I said before, we're gonna come up from Harris to a certain distance and build that, that section coming off of Nassau Boulevard and then through there. And it does help, because why? It backs right into the right of way.
Also, I think you have to understand that a lot of the work is on the south side of the tracks.
Right, which I understand.
So they can't cross over the tracks.
Correct.
So they have to come either around or be on the south side of tracks.
If you didn't use these two areas, do you have another location, other locations picked out that you would use?
As far as staging?
Yes.
These are, we had some other options which aren't feasible, so.
So if you didn't get these areas, where would you go?
We would dispatch from Hicksville. And we would bring the material in on an administrative basis. So there would be no staging within Garden City. It would just be a longer streak of, not a longer streak of trucks, but more trucks coming in and having to drop off that material through the access gate as opposed to dropping off in the staging yard and then deliver it to the access gate we installed on the right.
The last thing I just think to the board, not to do this, I feel like many of the residents for quality of life, we know we have to deal with a lot going on with trucks in and out and all of that. But this is just like the park, and it's just like another kick in the gut that we have to deal with something else. And, you know, my kids are there all the time. I hear the baseball games going on in the summer. It's just, that's why we live there. We wanna be close to the park and where our kids can play. And I just plead that you really consider this in the Long Island perspective.
Thank you.
Hi, Laura Bly, 5 Maryland Avenue. I'm right at the corner of Maryland and Kilburn. So I have four kids, I have another kid on the way. You're gonna be seeing a lot of us because we're in that field every day. I'm concerned about, you know, the use of the field. Because as Ann said, we were assured first that there was gonna be no gate put in in Kilburn. Then there was a gate put in in Kilburn. Now we're being told that it's not just gonna be for Kilburn. And that section that it's gonna be used in now, it's gonna be for the whole section from Nassau to Harris. Which sounds like a lot longer of a timeline than, you know, just kind of fighting the bullet and dealing with the Kilburn section. So I really don't support the fact that it's for Tullamore because my husband takes my four kids there on weekends. And a little peace and quiet is really nice when you're a stay-at-home mom. But...
Four kids? Four kids?
Well, they're not, they're in Tullamore. I actually, yeah. And another thing that we've, you've talked about is, as far as the 14-foot, I don't know what 14, he just said the 13 and a half feet trucks are like 90% of the trucks. My neighborhood assured us, because he had gone to all the meetings with you guys, which I wasn't able to go to, that there was gonna be some sort of mesh or something that was gonna be put up to kind of prevent trucks from coming through. Because I don't believe that trucks aren't just gonna start using it, whether the grade is there or not. They're hitting it now, they're gonna be hitting it with bigger trucks. So it's gonna be something put up there to kind of limit that. Because now I'm getting Nassau Boulevard, I'm getting my field used, and, you know, Maryland.
Are you referring to the bridge?
Raising the Nassau Boulevard Bridge to 14 feet.
Yeah, I, they don't say, I don't know what he, they were, thinks he or she heard. That's never been part of the conversation. We talked very early on that we were trying to come up with ideas to make sure we could keep traffic, truck traffic from increasing on Nassau Boulevard. But as far as I know, from day one, the theory of creating some false front or anything else, that was dismissed very quickly.
Okay, because then he must have been misinformed, because he tells us all the time he's a president of Camp Cannon and all this. So I don't know. But as, as far as that, if the point is to, to raise the bridge so that there's not bridge strikes and to protect the integrity of the railroad, why does it matter if there is something to keep trucks from going over there that's just gonna affect a truck and not affect the bridge? I guess is my, my point, my question.
So there, there were a lot of comments that we got during the EIS about raising the bridges throughout the corridor. Would that induce new truck traffic? We know that's a concern. I do believe something was evaluated with state DOT, and that's their arena and their regulations about. Can you place something? And some people said, can you artificially post a sign? You know, we, there, I think they do deduct a foot or something. And I may be misspelling, so please don't fault me here. But if this, you know, where the signs are posted at can be a little bit under to try to deter trucks. But you can't lie on a bridge sign and say, there's 10-foot clearance when it's a 14-foot bridge. So the idea of a bar, I think, was eliminated pretty quickly. There is a commitment for the railroad to continue working with the village and state UT on signage or something that could be done on Cherokee and other roadways to deter people, trucks from going through Nassau Boulevard.
Well, are you saying the hype is like a code, a state, it's a state law? I think it's important to state that.
Correct.
You know, you're not arbitrarily putting.
Yeah, no, these are, these are subs, that's very good point. These are substandard bridges. These are under clearance bridges.
Is the village doing something about that then? Are we digging in trucks or passing some?
We are going to take steps to prevent trucks from going down Nassau Boulevard, except for the local truck traffic.
And I've heard that from your mayor over 50 times. We are, we are trying to work together to come to a solution. And he is very aware of the community's response and that they want to deter trucks. And we've talked about it extensively. We're not there as far as figuring out what the solutions are.
Well, I know you guys, you're, you're building it based on what they're telling you to build. So I'm not, I'm not like, you know.
But we also have.
That's more for, for the village, trucks. And one more comment, Andy, you come to my house and I'm not there, can you leave, whatever? Because the only reason I'm here is because my neighbor told me at 7 o'clock, there was a meeting tonight about this. And I wouldn't have been here otherwise. And I have other neighbors who wouldn't, who couldn't come because they had no notice, they had no babysitter. So you would have had a lot more people here had we known that this was happening, so.
If I, like, where do you live, Ken?
5 Maryland.
Okay, so you're in the states, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've had, they were at our state's meeting last month.
Correct.
We've had numerous meetings, and we get out of notice and just people don't come. So I don't know how we get more notice out of this.
I mean, there was a notice in the G C News, but it didn't say anything about the Cow. And I didn't see that till after it's back about it.
No, I understand.